Mr. Banks, would you give us the prayer pledge in fact of the day, please, sir?
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you for your grace, your wisdom, and we ask you, Father, to place your hand upon this city, where we ask you to bless this meeting and help us to come to the conclusions that are best for all. We give you all the praise in Jesus’ name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On September 18th, 1793, George Washington lays the cornerstone to the United States Capitol Building, the home of the legislative branch of American government. The building would take nearly a century to complete. As architects came and went, the British set fire to it, and it was called into use during the Civil War. Today, the Capitol Building with its famous cast iron dome and important collection of American art is part of the Capitol complex, which includes six congressional office buildings and three Library of Congress buildings, all developed in the 19th and 20th centuries. Up to the date.
Okay. First up, we’ve got the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, and Commissioner Velasquez is going to read that for us, please.
First, I’d like to thank everyone who came out to support the Hispanic Heritage Ceremony, actually the event that we had at Kedland Nelson Park. So, thank you, whoever came out. We appreciate it. It was a good support. Thank you. And it was our first, and we hope to keep growing it. So, I’m going to read the proclamation. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the accomplishments of Hispanic Americans who have enriched our culture and society and helped make America into the incredible country it is today. And whereas Hispanic American men and women embody the American values of devotion to faith and family, hard work, patriotism, through their countless contributions as leaders, innovators, entrepreneurs, and members of our armed forces. And whereas our Hispanic community brings a rich cultural heritage, representing many countries, ethnicities, religious traditions that are interwoven into the fabric of America. And whereas our Hispanic community has a profound influence on our city and country by enhancing and shaping our national heritage with centuries-old traditions that reflect the multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their community. And whereas this month, we honor Hispanic Americans for their countless contributions to our nation. Through their dedication to family, community, and our country, they helped to build a better future for all Americans. To honor the achievements of Hispanic Americans, the Congress, by public law, 100-402, as amended, has authorized annually a proclamation designating September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now, therefore, Bryan Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month here in Apopka, and call upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all Apopkans to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. In witness, whereas, whereof, I apologize, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed this 15th day of September, 2022. Thank you, Mayor Nelson.
Thank you. That’s great. Okay. Edward, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have one. We want to add presentation from Richard Earp, the city engineer, related to Clear Lake subdivision, the Hydrate issue. So, we want to add that for presentation, and he has a PowerPoint.
Okay, all right. Richard, come on down. I know we’ve had some discussions about Clear Lake and the rising water levels, and so I asked Richard to kind of put together a couple of points for us just to go through, and then I know we probably got some folks from that neighborhood who want to come down and speak about it, but I thought, let’s try to get some facts out there, and then we’ll talk about the issue. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we’ve got a PowerPoint presentation that I’m sure will show up here magically in a moment.
Step off for one minute, you took over. Which one is yours, Clear Lake?
Clear Lake. Yeah. All right, so, Richard Earp, city engineer, thank you for having me. We want to talk about the high stages in Clear Lake this evening. So, the first exhibit here is the FEMA 100-year floodplain map, and the areas in the 100-year floodplain are shown in blue on the slide. Clear Lake is identified by the red, you know, label and arrow. So, Clear Lake is a privately-owned lake that does not have an outfall. There is no pipe or ditch that connects Clear Lake to Mud Lake or any other lake. Like a lot of lakes in Apopka, it is a landlocked lake, which means that it doesn’t overflow anywhere when we get unusually heavy amounts of rainfall. Other examples of landlocked lakes on this slide are Holtz Lake, Lake Anne, Country Landing Lake, Mud Lake, and the majority of the rest of the lakes in the City of Apopka are also landlocked lakes. Some of the lakes in this slide, though, are not landlocked lakes. Kind of the area over on the right-hand, kind of the bottom of the slide, where you see those blue areas all sort of joining together and forming one shape, those are lakes that do have an outfall, and those include Lake Marshall, Upper Lake Doe, Lower Lake Doe, and Lake Witherington. So, generally lakes, I spoke with the water managed, St. John’s River Water Management District today, and we talked about the fact that landlocked lakes have more lake-level fluctuation driven by both droughts that make the lakes kind of dry up when we have dry times, and of course, in the middle of the wet season, like we are now, it causes lakes to rise. So, staff has been aware of concerns at Clear Lake, and actually, before the city bought Camp Weewah, there were concerns with Mud Lake and some of the other lakes. The YMCA was concerned that some of those lakes got high in 2019. So, we’ve been researching and looking into the area for a while. On this slide, kind of summarizes some of the research and coordination that we’ve done. Of course, the first place we went was the Orange County Lake Atlas. On a lot of lakes, they have a lot of data. On Clear Lake, which is also called Clearwater Lake, there’s not a great deal of data. Someone collected the lake stage data from 1971 to 1975, but it’s not terribly helpful. I’ll talk about Lake Watch in a moment, which is an opportunity to get the, some of the residents to volunteer to begin to collect both lake-level elevations and water quality data for Clear Lake. That’s a program put together through University of Florida and IFAS. It’s called the Lake Watch Program. Of course, I’ve been out there quite a lot. I’ve conducted field investigations several times in 2019 and this year. Actually, earlier today, Mayor Nelson, the Public Services Director, Mr. Boodoo, and I also drove the area and looked at high lake stages in that area of the city. I mentioned that I’d coordinated with the St. John’s River Water Management District. Their informal position on the matter was today was that they don’t believe that the stage of Clear Lake would warrant an emergency permit if there were somewhere to pump water to, and partially, that’s because the homes in the subdivision are all at least six feet above the current lake stages. And then at the bottom, I mentioned the coordination with the Lake Watch, with the University of Florida, and I emailed them today and asked them for additional information, if there were volunteers available, interested in studying the lake more and collecting data that, hopefully, they’ll respond back, and I’ll be able to pass that on to people here soon. So, the summary of the current conditions is that Clear Lake is a private, landlocked lake with no outfalls. Like many of the other lakes in central Florida right now, the lakes are high. We’ve had a lot of rain and a lot of isolated, heavy thunderstorms in, you know, throughout central Florida. So, there are a lot of lakes that are unusually high, like they are during the rainy season on a lot of years. Clear Lake will slowly recover through both evaporation and slow infiltration of the water into the lake, into the deeper Floridian aquifers, which is our drinking water. There is no practical solution to pump down Clear Lake. I mentioned a moment ago that St. John’s River Water Management District has already let me know that if there were someplace to pump the water to another lake, it’s not warranted at this time due to the homes being six feet above the current lake stage. So, that’s my presentation.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Earp?
I’ve got a couple. So, it says, I saw the diagrams you’re providing, some of those areas are within the floodplain, which I understand. I think the park specifically is in that floodplain, but that’s a 100-year floodplain. So, are we insinuating this is a 100-year floodplain scenario?
Well, Clear Lake right now, again, I’m working with the assumption that the project that was built before my time here with the Apopka was built in accordance with the plan, and they’re usually very, very close. Based on that information of the elevation of the playground relative to the 100-year, we’re about a foot away from the 100-year stage in Clear Lake, roughly, right now.
Okay. And then what would, because you said that, the St. John’s River Water Management District, they don’t think that it warrants an emergency permit. What would warrant an emergency permit? At what point do they say it’s time?
Well, one example would be Border Lake, and over the years, what happens down on Border Lake, which is on, similar on Boulevard, right before, it actually borders Orange County and Seminole County. So, when that lake gets high, it actually flows under 436 and flows towards Lake Cortez. And so, when that lake gets high enough, the water is headed towards another landlocked lake, which is Lake Cortez, which is at the bottom of the hill. And so, as that lake fills, the homes, I think we actually flooded, or someone’s garage flooded, and it got close to threatening their homes. So, in that case, over several of the last few years, St. John’s has allowed the city to pump water out of Border Lake. Actually, we pump it east over on the other side of Piedmont-Wakiba Boulevard. And so, they have authorized emergency permits for us to do all that pumping.
Okay. So, my concern is that if we wait till, I mean, effectively, we’re waiting for an emergency permit to damage somebody’s property, and then we have to, then we’ll get a permit. So, I’d rather not get to that point if we don’t have to. And we haven’t seen, this is average rainfall we’ve been getting. We haven’t gotten a hurricane, we haven’t gotten a tropical storm, depression, anything, and we’re seeing these issues. So, my concern, and I think anybody’s concern, especially those residents in that neighborhood, is that should we actually get a real hurricane coming, which is not uncommon and not out of the ordinary, it’s going to be that much worse. So, do you feel that if we get just a Cat 1 hurricane, that this is going to be a real big issue for that neighborhood, or do you think it’s going to be something that it’s not going to damage property?
Well, at this time, again, the lake would have to rise at least six feet to affect the actual finished floor elevations of the homes. So, when engineers design subdivisions that are focused on keeping the homes from becoming flooded, yards flood during heavy rainfall events, sometimes roadways flood up to and over the crown of the roadway. So, it’s not unusual for subdivisions to be designed so that yards flood, I mean, they’re not designing to prevent yards from flooding, it’s the finished floor elevation of the home that is the objective.
Okay. And I guess, I mean, those are most of my questions. The ask that I have is, there’s got to be something we can do, whether it’s a bandage now, while it’s going down, while we’re waiting for evaporation, which I can imagine is a fast process. So, I don’t know, I’m not the, I’m not you. I don’t have that education or knowledge or experience, and I kind of rely on you to tell me, here’s what we can do to at least help make the residents feel a little more comfortable, let them know that this is something that is at least slowing it down to some capacity, something, or at least speeding the process up one way or the other. So, I would kind of ask you to provide us with something. It’s tough, the answer I don’t like is, we have to just wait for nature to do its thing, because by that time, we could get a hurricane, two hurricanes, it’s not uncommon that we’ve gotten three or four in one season. So, we need to do something. You guys did in Sheila Oaks, you guys came up with a great plan there, and you guys were implementing it, and that was great. So, if we can, I know that’s a totally different scenario, but it is a water issue. So, if we can find something similar, you guys have a lot more experience and knowledge on this, so I know you guys can come up with something.
Yeah, we’ll continue to coordinate internally and coordinate with the St. John’s River Water Management District, and if anyone has some idea that’s feasible, that we could explore, we’ll be happy to. But right now, it’s a landlocked lake, it’s raining a lot, we’re not aware of anything that we can do other than wait for that situation to get better. Again, it’s six feet, so most hurricanes, at the most, would drop, you know, 12 or 14 inches with a very heavy rain hurricane, and so, you know, I think the lake can handle that without any problem at all, with six feet of freeboard currently between the lake and the homes.
The problem is, this isn’t a, I mean, it’s just starting to become an issue because of all those other developments that are coming to play. So, I don’t know if we can, we have Avian Point that’s still being developed and having, I don’t know how many hundreds of units that are coming online here shortly. If we can, because they’re still kind of in the phase of development, if we can create more ponds over there on their properties to help offset, maybe it’s not going to stop this specific issue, but it’s not going to make it worse. It’ll help out and hopefully mitigate any additional water that’s going to be leading to that lake. So, I don’t know if that’s an avenue that we can look at and ask Avian Point and help them help us.
I’ll talk with the Water Management District about that this week. I have old-time colleagues and friends there, and they return calls right away. So, I’ll try to get a meeting with them soon to see if there’s anything that they’re aware of that we can do. Thank you.
Well, Richard, I guess the bottom line is that any development that we approve has to be able to handle all the storage of any rainfall on their own property. We don’t allow somebody to dump into another neighborhood, into a lake, it has to be retained on-site. Is that...
Yes, sir, yeah. And all of the three subdivisions that have developed around Clear Lake, all of them met all of the state St. John’s River Water Management regulations, and it wasn’t here at the time, but I assume they met also the city water management regulations. I’ve looked into some of the detail of that, and they appear to be designed like all subdivisions are. And yeah, so, the idea is to prevent stage increases in Clear Lake.
Any neighborhood, anywhere across, well, not even just City of Apopka, it’s Orange County, it’s Ocoee, it’s the state of Florida, any development has to be able to capture, hold all the water that’s rain or whatever that falls on their property.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I think that’s the problem, though, that we’re dealing with right now. Avian Point, I drove over there, their ponds are filling, it’s basically one big lake now, all their retention ponds are basically one level with Clear Lake. Same thing with Clear Lake Estates, it’s the same thing. So, they’re not doing, I guess, what they’re intended, and maybe it just was planned differently, and we have possibly newer things that we need to add, but those are all full. So, although those were designed properly, or they were designed to spec, they’re not functioning properly. So, there’s got to be a way to mitigate this in some way.
Richard, when I spoke to the residents that the flooding is affecting their backyard, from what I understand, there was a recommendation for sandbags, and then that was denied. Would the sandbags help?
Well, I guess, I’m an engineer, I guess I could imagine building a sandbag wall, but the fact is that the water is six feet below them, so you would need six or seven feet of sandbags, I guess, so I’ve never seen that.
Okay.
But if folks want sandbags, and if it makes them feel better, or then we’re happy to provide sandbags, or happy to make sandbags available for folks.
To make sandbags available?
Yes, ma’am.
Okay. And what are we planning, I mean, whose responsibilities, because I remember visiting that location, I believe it was 2015 or 16, and at that time, the flooding was already there, and there was, I don’t know, probably about 40 trees that were underwater, the roots. So, who would be responsible for kind of eliminating those trees? And actually, that little park that’s there serves no function to that community, because it’s really underwater.
Right, yeah. All the, the entire lake is private property, and so the trees are all on private property. The city doesn’t have easements over the areas near the lake, it’s all privately-owned.
Okay.
Mr. Banks?
So, basically, we’re 72 inches away from the floor level, is what you’re saying. Six feet, 72 inches. And a hurricane would bring approximately 12 to 14 inches. So, we’d have to have the equivalent of five hurricanes back-to-back with no recession to hit that level. So, I mean, I think that’s, that can give some measure of comfort, knowing even though it’s, yes, it’s, you know, we hate to see the pictures of the playground, these different things, but if they’re built below that floodplain, you know, they are being affected. I’m curious to know why that was possibly allowed at that point. It’s okay, it’s not their dwellings, but, you know, we do have a significant amount of inches that it would have to increase again to reach that place. So, I think to give a little bit of comfort to the homeowners that, you know, one big storm isn’t going to be flooding their homes at this point. At the same time, we always need to be looking at options to, you know, if, so, basically the way this was stated, if we got to an emergency place where they did, where St. John’s did approve emergency measures, would we be able to port it over to some of the surrounding neighborhoods, because they’re supposed to keep it on their own? Is that what emergency does, because it did go across Piedmont-Wakiba to other places? So, if it ever got to that place, is that basically how it would function?
Well, if we got closer to that place, I would be getting with St. John’s, and we would try to figure out if there were something we can do. The thing that St. John’s looks out for and was very careful when we got the emergency approval to pump down Border Lake, was that we’re not just, we’re not just moving a flooding problem from here to somewhere else. And so, I know there’s a lot of residents, and actually, some of them are within and very close to the floodplain in that chain of lakes, Lake Marshall, Upper Lake Doe, Lower Lake Doe, all that discharges over by Boy Scout Road. And there’s some folks over there that are very low, that I’m sure wouldn’t want more water into that system. But if it did get close, I would work closely with St. John’s River, and we would see if there was something that could be done, but there’s just no place to pump the water.
But according to them, we would have to have significant equivalent of five hurricanes to really reach that level. So, okay.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I have two questions, and both are basically answered. And one of them was that the development, was it a cause of the flooding? And you’ve said no. And then my other question was, if the emergency permit was issued, where would we pump the water?
Yeah, there’s no good place to pump the water.
And it’s, one of the things that we go back and forth, you know, I’m kind of an opponent, as in against drainage wells, because drainage wells basically put whatever surface water is down to the aquifer. And it’s not, you know, we talk about water quality, and unfortunately, when water quantity becomes a problem, it’s one of the only ways to get water out of a region, not out of a one small lake. And that, so that’s the challenge we have, is, you know, how do you, we were talking about Border Lake, you know, that was up to the, right up to the edge of 436, and it was over Wakiba-Piedmont, and we were pumping water, basically making everybody feel good, but we weren’t really doing a lot with the water there. So, we were looking at taking and piping all the water from Border Lake and Lake Page and...
Pleasant.
Lake Pleasant, all the way out to our place on Cleveland, and then treat it, make, turn it into reclaim water. That was, you know, and we’re still trying to get funding to be able to do that, because I can tell you, before Clear Lake floods, I guarantee you, it will, 436 will be underwater long before Clear Lake houses are underwater. I mean, wouldn’t that be a fair...
Yeah, so if we had some regional rain coverage, I would think definitely, yes.
Yeah, I mean, so, it, so, you know, the question that you go back to, and, you know, is, you know, water quality is great, and, you know, you want to protect the water quality as best you can, but when it gets down to flooding, the only real alternative for a regional solution is drainage wells, and I don’t think that the, I don’t think DEP nor St. John’s nor the state are going to allow any new drainage wells. I mean, I know we’re trying to find, Orange County was trying to find the drainage well there at 436, when they widened it, they couldn’t find it. It’s not, you know, and so, Orange County kind of threw in the towel on whether we replace that. We tried to get them to let us replace the drainage well that is gone. We also have one there on Piedmont-Wakiba, a little farther down toward 441, that’s in dire need of repair. But our solution was to, you know, to pipe the water out of those basins back to our site there on Cleveland. And so, it’s, yeah, there’s, you know, water quality and quantity are sometimes competing. Thank you, Richard. Appreciate that. Okay. Susan?
Okay. Okay, I have Shontae, come up first.
Yeah.
Shontae Jimmison, 1186, Tallo Road, Apopka, Florida, 32703. Good afternoon, Mayor Nelson and Commissioners. My name is Shontae Jimmison. I am the president and CEO of Reimagining Communities. We’re a nonprofit here in Apopka, Florida, and I’m here today, a little nervous, but I’m here today to discuss some initiatives that we have coming up with our students for this academic school year. The first initiative is our AOK Literacy Program. This program was started during the summer. It was a virtual reading sessions for our students, and we averaged about 250 to over 1,000 views per session. So, it was a really good initiative. The parents and the students really got involved and rallied behind us, and we’re taking it to another level this year. So, we are going to introduce monthly interactive live reading sessions within different locations within our city. And we’ve already scheduled our first one for October. It’ll be a pajama party, night at the museum, at our Apopka Museum. So, we will host not only the virtual ones, but the in-live session ones. We also will be hosting our Creative Kids Service Club. This service club is focused on community giving back, the students giving back. And when we think about community service, we normally think about high school students or college-age students. Well, we decided that we’re going to get our students that are in middle school a chance to learn to give back to their communities, and we think that’s very important, because now we’re giving these students the sense of knowing that they too can contribute to our communities, and there’ll be community service-oriented projects within the city. Our first ones, they will be making ornaments for the elderly in our community. And so, the reason that we’re here is because tonight, we’re asking that the city would allow us to have three free libraries, the little libraries within the city limits. And we don’t want to purchase these libraries, we want the community to really come together and help us. So, we’ve already partnered with the Apopka Fire Department. They’re going to help us build one of the free libraries. AMI Kids Students, for one of their service projects, they are going to build these libraries. So, not only will these kids be able to go and get free books if they don’t have transportation to the local libraries, but these libraries will be built by people in our communities for our students. We’re also asking for space for a free seed library. This will be the first one in central Florida, and we’re asking for that to go along with our I Promise Gardens Initiative, and most of you guys know about that, because you’ve all taken the pledge with our students. And it will be a seed library where they can go and get free seed packets. So, we are promoting healthy eating for our students, and those parents or families that cannot afford to go out and buy those things, they can learn how to grow them in their homes. We’re asking that the city council would continue to assist us in meeting our financial goals and potentially partnering with us to raise $15,000 for these two programs throughout the academic school year. I’ve presented a budget for each of you, and it’s an itemized budget that you guys have, and we will fundraise for the rest of the amounts, but we would like for you guys to consider partnering with us, and also donate it or reduce space for our Creative Kids Club, for us to go and make the ornaments for our senior citizens. We would love to sit and talk with you guys about it more. Super excited about what we’re doing in our community. I'm super excited about what we're doing in our community. We will have the first seed library, and Apopka also has the first read around the city. So what we're doing here with our students and our community is amazing, and I hope you guys just consider partnering with us to continue to do more. Thank you.
Oh, hang on, we have some questions for you.
Yeah, we got lots of questions, lots of questions.
Sorry.
Commissioner Blaskow, you all started out.
Well, you know, we were, I, I certainly did participate in Read Around Apopka, and I remember that was very interactive and it was a lot of fun and the kids really enjoyed it. Then we did another one where I remember at the museum, where was that? What, what program was that?
So that was a continuation of the Read Around Our City, and the kids got to go in, in tour the, the museum and, and do a scavenger hunt in there. So it's not only having them read, but also learn about our city as well.
Okay. So this particular program is, is it going to be, because now we're in the school year and we're kind of back in the school, so how will this operate while the student, and you're saying middle school, you're, you're aiming to bring in middle school students?
For the Creative Kids Club. And so we will meet once a month and work on a project every quarter. And so October, November, and then we will present them in December. So we work with our schools to get the students that participate. So we work hand-in-hand with our schools, especially with our literacy program. We work with the media specialists and our librarians there and their book clubs to try to promote, because they already have the current programming, right? So how do you get a child that doesn't like to read, to read? So you make it fun and interactive and kind of think outside of the box. We can have a hundred programs, if they don't want to read, doesn't really matter. So we're coming in and saying, hey, we want to assist you to take your program to the next level and bringing our communities to help our schools.
So you're partnering with different schools that will participate in that?
Yes.
Because as you go through the different schools, they have the space to continue this program after school?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what you will be doing with the Creative Kids Club?
So now the Creative Kids Clubs, we don't want to make it sectioned off for different schools. We're inviting all schools to a centralized location. So let's say if we did it at the VFW on a Saturday, then all of the kids that sign up can come out to the VFW on that Saturday, and we'll begin making the ornaments for our elderly people, and then we will do it for each quarter. It's a different project for the students.
Okay. And then the AOK Literacy Initiative, tell me a little bit about that one.
So we started that over the summer to kind of keep kids reading during the summer and help parents, you know, take a load off while their, the kids are playing on their iPads. And so we came with a virtual reading initiative that did very well. And we wanted to do something that led up into our Read Around the City to keep the momentum going, because between the time of the Read Around the City, parents were like, okay, what, what's next? And so we decided to take this reading initiative throughout the academic school year. So every month, they will have an in-person session and a virtual session that students can attend to continue them reading throughout the academic school year. And so it's like a citywide virtual book club, if you, if you will. And all students, any elementary school throughout the city of Apopka, they can participate in it. So we're bringing all those kids together in a centralized location to do a, a live reading session.
Okay, so you plan to do that by utilizing the VFW?
Well, so we want to highlight different businesses. So we already have it scheduled out for the first quarter. So the first one will be at the Apopka Museum, then we'll go to Birchwood Coffee, and then we have one with the Fire Department. So it'll be at different locations throughout the city.
Okay. All right, that, I'll take more time, because I know that you've run these programs successfully. I certainly have participated in them. I'm just wondering how we're going to incorporate as the school year is now active? And a lot of the students are already in support programs that sometimes takes them after school, during school. And so at the same time, I don't want to kind of discourage that one child who's already kind of struggling and in different programs in the school, support programs, and then we come along and we's like, giving them another program. So we, I want to be able to work something out where it's encouraging, it's fun, and it's something that is separate from the school.
Yeah, so we, we work really closely with our schools, especially those schools that have after-school programs. So for, let's say if a student has band on Wednesday, and we're offering a live reading session on Wednesday, they can also go online after they finish their band practice to also engage, and then we'll have games online. We don't want to leave any student out. So it's a hybrid experience. They can come live, in person, or they can also go to the website and participate in it as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Baxter?
Yeah, congratulations and thanks to you. This is tremendous. Obviously, literacy is key, because when kids miss that and then they just keep building on it, it, it really puts them behind. So definitely worthwhile. The, the space for the three libraries, do you already have something where you want those located? And, and have you already worked with staff, or how do you want to approach that?
We have not. The, Gerald Maynor from the Fire Department offered to allow us to put one near Fire Station One, and they would actually build it, but we do not have the spaces for the other three. We would like them to be scattered throughout the city so that all students, no matter what part of Apopka they live in, they will have access to. So anywhere centralized, we're open to wherever you all say that, that it's feasible.
And I'd love to know, as you look it over, where would be the ideal places if we can accommodate that? You know, I'd love to, to aim at that for us. As far as the partnerships there, and I read the email, but there was nothing specific there, or is there something that you're going to bring to us individually as Commissioners out of our own ability to, to support this? A, a specific ask in that sense?
Yes. Yes, I was trying to keep it, you know, within my four minutes, so I wanted to be very vague, but I would love to sit with each of you whenever time permits and I can go over in detail. We have the program laid out for the academic school year with all of the costs associated with it, and I would love to just go more into detail with you all.
Wonderful. Again, this will really help our kids to succeed, so thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I'd just like to say, congratulations with the projects that you've already completed. And I too had an opportunity to participate in the Read Around Apopka last year. Somehow I got designated to take my grandkids around. So it was, it was rewarding and, and fun as well. So I've had an opportunity to visit several of the businesses and had an opportunity to read. And so a- as an educator, there's always opportunities to improve what we're doing with our young people, and there can never be enough education. And so I, I like what you're doing, and I support that.
Thank you.
Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, I, we've spoken ample on this, and I absolutely love everything that you're doing. I think your programs meet kids where they're at, and I think that's the most important thing, is they, you're not having, they don't have to come to you. You're coming to them to meet them where they're at, to be able to educate them that way. And as a student that didn't like reading, this is really important. One thing, and, and I've told you that many times, the, the seed program, I think, is absolutely incredible, being able to teach people how to grow their own food. Absolutely incredible, and, and I think it's genera- it can change generations. So, and, and I, I think having it here right next to Station One, on City Hall property, absolutely incredible, perfect idea, it's a safe location, well-lit, easily accessible. I think it makes all the sense in the world. So however we can help you, let us know. Happy to meet anytime, just, you've got clearly our full support. So thank you so much for being here, and thank you for all you do in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dennis New?
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street, Apopka, Florida, 32703. I've come here tonight to talk about a couple of things, I'm going to make them as quick as I can. I'm going to start with some words. We elected you guys to represent us. I've said this before, not to rule us. And I don't think the problem is sitting up here necessarily. The bureaucracy causes an issue. I've been watching the code enforcement hearings, and we're taking tax-paying residents of the city to code enforcement hearings for things like a roof that needs repair, or a tarp on their roof, or graffiti on their fence, or their grass being too tall. And I've mentioned it here before. We got a building out there at the Lake Apopka Wildlife Drive covered in graffiti, which is specifically against the kitty, the city code. We got the Conley property, the grass in the backyard is still shoulder-high. The paint on the building is in disrepair. We got the Forest Avenue City Complex that has a building that has at least four layers of tarps on the roof. So the words I want to use are hypocrisy, mismanagement, malfeasance, misfeasance, or is it just hypocrisy and poor management? We're beating up the taxpayers over something that the city is not fixing on their own buildings. I, I, I've heard it before. It's a budget issue. The building that I'm talking about in the Forest Avenue Complex has been like that for at least six years. Okay? Then tonight, they want to talk about a different subject, flooding. I've lived here sixty years. In my sixty years of living here, never have I seen Laurel Street flood. It's a county street, so nobody really cares. But we put a new-fangled drainage box over there for some reason, and now when it rains, Laurel Street floods, because the water backs up, because that new box they put in backs it up. So somebody came and had to dig a bypass ditch around the fancy bypass box that I think we paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to install to get the water off of Laurel Street. Okay? The map the fellow put up about the Clear Lake incident, I'll contest that. There was a ditch. In the 1970s, when they repaved the road out front, they took out the outfall pipe that used to go across the street into Mud Lake. And from Mud Lake, it went through a ditch that was maintained for years by the Boy Scouts until the YMCA took it over and they stopped taking care of it. And it, leaves and debris and trees and everything fell, and now it's typical level. The same with Lake Shepherd. There's a ditch out of the back of Lake Shepherd that goes to Upper Doe and Lower Doe, and then on to Lake Marshall. The ditch is plugged up. Nobody cleans it out. So water's backing up, because through individual times, and you guys may not know about it, and I'm sure the city engineer doesn't know about it, but I used to frog-gig in those ditches with my dad and my uncles and my cousin. The ditches were there, the outfall pipes were there. The other thing that caused Clear Lake to never back up is that Lust owned property and they had orange groves on it, and they pumped water out of the lake almost daily to irrigate the groves. So there is an outfall problem at Clear Lake. There's an engineering problem somewhere in the city, because now we're flooding Laurel Street. And when you ask somebody from the city about it, they shrug their shoulders and say, well, that's a county road. The county didn't put in that damn box. The city did. And now Laurel Street floods. So the last thing is on the code enforcement issue. Why doesn't code enforcement enforce the code against city-owned properties? That's kind of hypocritical. Then I realized the other day, when they came back to my house to re-inspect it, because I got everything cleaned up, five years I've had a trailer in my backyard off and on. It's a tandem axle enclosed trailer. I see the light, but I'm going to finish tonight. The code enforcement officer took it upon himself to ordinate it a commercial vehicle. Now, you know, I ain't got a lot to do with a hurt elbow, but I did look up commercial vehicles in the city code. And other than having a tandem axle, the trailer doesn't fit the description of a commercial vehicle. So is it vindictiveness? Is it revenge? Or is it poor management? With that, I'll see you again in two weeks.
You have Venus Griffith?
Commercial.
Welcome, Venus.
I'm Venus.
My name is Venus Griffith. I live in the Clear Lake Estates subdivision. I know most of you all up there, except probably one person, but everybody knows me up there and have been around Clear Lake many a times. Well, I'm up here to protest and to say that I live in the first house when you come into Clear Lake Estates. When, Mayor, you came out there at the time, it was flooded. It's ten times worse than ever before. We've been dealing with this for five years. I've been fighting this with City Hall for five years, and it needs to be corrected. Now, I'm not an engineer, but I did my homework. So, Mr. Richard Ert, you said that we don't have canals in our lakes out there. That's wrong. You said that we have no pollution out there. That's wrong. Because I saw ducks today that was on my property with algae. The ducks looked at the algae on the lake, and they looked like puzzled, why is that there? They moved around the algae out there to clear water. They know it's toxic, they know it's a problem out there, and they would not drink that water at all. Magnolia Park has cleaned up, beautiful park. I was out there this weekend. High walls to prevent any more flooding out there. And I've been on every side of Lake Apopka. Val Demings, in, in November twenty, twenty-one, met with you, Mr. Nelson, and said that they'll partner up with you for twenty million dollars to clean up the infrastructure and the problems that is out there. What happened to that money? I don't know. I have the article.
What now, twenty million dollars?
I have the article. Here's the article.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I have the article. I have receipts. I didn't come up here empty-handed. So, one thing I noticed too, in January 20th, 2021, you indicated, Your Honor, that McCormick system out there, the water system out there, also share fifty million gallons of reclaimed water per day. Orange County Utilities and Apop- and Altamont Springs clearly have the ability to reclaim that water. Please tell Orange County, we have enough water out here, we don't need any more water. And I'm not up, I'm up here to say, I'm not a meteorologist. I don't have a degree in that area. No one is qualified to tell us that we have to wait for five hurricanes in order to have my house underwater. Mr. Mayor, you promised me that my house would be taken care of. That's the house that God gave us. That's the house that we work very hard, and you know my profession, work very, very hard to keep that house and to make sure that it would have no problems there. Commissioner Baxter? You have your mom and dad in the same neighborhood. They are six doors down from me. I have not seen you out there. Your parents came, knocked on my door, asked me to vote for you. And I know you for many years, but I'm appalled, I haven't seen you out there. You need to come and see about your parents. They're elderly parents. I'm a senior citizen. I know I look good, but I'm a senior citizen. But is that a problem, that you're not taking care of the seniors out there? And I don't know what the button means. I, I have to talk, I'm sorry. But I will not stand by and tell, and you guys tell me, and, and, and Richard tells me, you cannot drain that lake. You can drain that lake in Mud Lake. It's clear. It's nothing in there, no water. You can drain it. The only reason why you may not drain it is because of the toxics that we have in Clear Lake. So we are not going to stand by. You probably need to hire outside source, and I'm going to sit down in a few minutes, limonecti- limonologists, which is, can study the inland waters, and John Osborne, who has a degree in studying that from UCF. And get somebody out there that can really know what we're doing. Don't tell me, Richard, that we don't have a place out there. Mud Lake, we want to drain, I don't want to have to see sandbags behind my house. And you know what's so appalling? I lost my father last year. I lost my father on the nineteenth of- I lost my father on the 19th of August. This year, I lost my mother on the 31st of August. And I have people coming over to my house. They said, Venus, what happened out there? I said, it's underwater and it's getting worse out there. See about your parents.
I've been there.
Yes, good. Do something. Diane and this young man over here, Nick, has been out there plenty of times. So hire, outsource everything. You'll get some answers then. Because if Richard don't have the answers, I bet you any amount of money, you can outsource it and get answers. And we demand at Clear Lake Estates and for the Clear Lake Landings, we demand answers. Thank you.
Hey, Sylvester Hall.
I'm not so bad looking myself.
How y'all doing? Sylvester Hall, 3091 Rolling Hills Lane, Apapka, Florida. Just want to say hello again to everybody and thank everybody for coming out. And I'm going to go ahead and take these sunglasses off, because I know people who know me are sitting around saying, man, what's Sylvester doing wearing sunglasses in here? That's not his character. I'm wearing those sunglasses, and hopefully you can reflect on the last month and a half, well, month, the situation that we have going with the Apapka Fire Department. The way I look at it, even Ray Charles can see what's going on. Well, how can the mayor and commissioners, I'm going to say you guys too, how can y'all not see what's going on? Clearly, we have a good old boy system at the fire department. I'm sitting back and I'm looking at some of the things that the old fire chief got fired for. Like, he got fired for this, he got fired for that. And then I'm looking at what's going on now. If that don't constitute being replaced? The safety report? The leadership that's been displayed? I'm telling you right now, based on my experience, you have a hostile environment. Mayor, I look at you for creating that. This was your appointee. This was your appointee. When we needed him to be a leader, he failed to show up. Now, I got 20 years in military forces. You can't lead nobody in the battle and you don't know if they got your back or not. Those young firefighters need a leader that's going to stand up, that they know that leader has their back. They know that leader is going to support them. When you have people afraid to speak out, you have a problem, Mayor. And I talked about loyalty hiring and loyalty staffing. That create a hostile environment. Been there, done that. So what I'm telling you tonight is that anything short of reassigning the police chief, Mr. D L Fire Chief, you're falling short of what we elected you to do. And that's to put our safety first in this city. Anything short of reassigning the fire chief, you are letting the city down. Now, with four minutes, I can't break everything down, but I have never addressed this podium and not speak from the heart and not speak from experience. And some of the things I have said before, Mayor, procedures matters, rules matters, ethics matters, character matters. If you hadn't listened, we probably wouldn't be in this situation right now. But you look at, I looked at the report, I think it was Apapka Critic. It praises our fire department, and of course, we do have great men and women in our fire department, but they need leadership. If you can look at them and see their greatness, and you can't look at them right now and say they need leadership, there's a problem with your assessment. Don't pat me on the back and tell me how great I am and then don't support me when you know I'm in need, when you know I'm crying out for help. And if I say something, I know I'm going to lose my job. Retaliation. I'm not speaking for things that I don't know about or haven't experienced. I'm speaking for firsthand knowledge, been there and done that. So Mayor, I'm going to say again, anything short, and I'm not calling from Forrest's raison d'etre, because sometimes you have to be careful looking on the outside, looking on the outside, looking in. You don't know everything. But if it talks like a duck, act like a duck. Act like it's a duck. And I don't seem enough to know that we have a duck. So I'm saying again, anything short of reassigning the fire chief, you're headed in the wrong direction.
That it? All right. Okay. Next up, consent agenda. We've got three items on the consent agenda. Does anybody need to pull any of those items? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the three consent agenda items.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, business item, site access and indemnification agreement. Pam, you got that one?
Pam Richmond, Community Development. I'm here to ask you to approve a site access and indemnification agreement with Hubbard Construction Company. They're the construction company that's doing the work out on US 441 right now, and they ran into some problems finding a place to store their equipment. And they asked us, could they please use this site? The project is, right now, a 267-day project. It's expected to be completely done by the end of April. I think they'll probably be done a little earlier. But in the meantime, they need a place to park vehicles, put their MOT equipment and other things related to construction.
Any questions for Pam? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve the site access and indemnification agreement with Hubbard Construction Company.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Pam. Next up, Jim, this is authorize the waiver of the city's procurement process to negotiate approval contract with TCF for the identification of taxpayers that are delinquent in payment or attainment of their BTR business tax receipt.
Hi, Mayor. Jim Head City, Community Development Director. This is basically, it's kind of a two-step process. The first part, the first part that we are asking is to authorize the city procurement process to negotiate and approve a contract with TCF for the identification of taxpayers that are delinquent in payment or attainment of their business tax receipt itself. This is also to allow the city to negotiate through our procurement process a little bit differently than what we normally would. This particular company, TCF, is a company that has worked with quite a few different cities, municipalities, and corporations in regards to collecting delinquent fees or fees that basically are, we have not been able to identify, to go after in order to pay for their business tax receipt. Right now, the person that's here that will be going through the little bit of a PowerPoint, his name is Ramsey Nasser, and he's already identified a little over 6,000 potential businesses, corporations, that have not paid into the business tax system, which could accumulate anywhere from $300,000 to $400,000. The contract is actually a, it's a percentage-based type contract, so it actually is not coming out of the city coffers. But we do get these delinquent or negligent business tax receipts paid into the city, and it's based on 25% of whatever the fee would actually be that they would pay into. And we've got, our BTRs run anywhere from $50, $50 up to $250, $300 for some of those. So if we get 25, if we have this expert company that actually can collect 75% for the city and they get 25%, it's a step in the right direction. We simply don't have staff and the expertise to be able to go out after these companies and businesses in order to attain that. We have basically one person that does business tax receipts. We've got one person in training to issue the business tax receipts, and those are, we are doing those, of course electronically, sending those versus printing them and sending them in the mail. So the main thing that we do, that we would end up being responsible for is sending the initial letters out to those businesses to let them know that they are, they do need to pay these fees. And at that point, that's where we would collect the funds. So with that being said, Mr. Nasser?
As he comes up, Edward, I know we've got some money in the budget that we've, based on the contract, and I can't remember, was it 100,000?
I think it was a little bit more than that, Mayor.
We've got money in the budget based on, hopefully they find, you know, I'm kind of likening it to the water contract, where we found $400,000 in underbilled or unbilled water. So it's the same type of an arrangement. So, Mr. Nasser, if you want to come forward and give us a real short...
Yeah, we do have funding in the 3400 line item under the Community Development Department, about $150,000.
Is $150,000? Okay, I knew we had something in there for this. Okay.
Before we move on to that, what are you saying budgeting? Explain that to me slower.
In Community Development, we have, basically, we did put a line item in there. It's the 3400 line item under the 4020 Community Development Department. And it's basically for contracts. We also use the same fund for doing assessments, surveys, items like that, projects that we don't, we don't know they're coming up, similar to this, because, you know, at the time when we were putting the budget together back in, you know, March, April, May, June, we didn't, we knew that this was coming up, but we didn't know what it was going to cost or the parameters that we were going to be...
Well, it's like a cost as anything, Jim. It's going to create revenue.
Correct.
Well, so that's my question. Why are we, I didn't understand why we were bringing up anything budgeting, because they're paying for themselves.
Yes, yes. It does pay for itself, but we do have to pay for the mailing portion, and that's...
I know, but that'd be more than offset by them.
Yeah, that's a drop in the bucket.
Exactly. Just wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And just so everybody knows, this is the old occupational tax.
Yeah, used to be called occupational licensing.
You know, a new name. So come on forward. Let's, Mr. Nasser.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. I appreciate it and very nice to meet all of you. So my business is 17 years old. We've been, I'm sorry. Yeah. We've been working, for the last 17 years, we'll be working, assisting all type of government agencies from federal, state, county, and municipalities. And the main business is, what we do is disaster preparedness, response, and recovery. Upon, I mean, during these years, we had, I was approached by one of the recorders in West Virginia, they call them, which is the clerk in Florida over here, and to assist them in collecting their taxes. And we developed a technology to do that. And when I moved back to Florida, I noticed that there's the same problem. So we applied that technology to Florida, and that's how we were able to identify these issues. So I want to bring your attention to the slide in front of you, and in particular, a person, definition of a person, based on Florida statutes, chapter 205. And this includes all of these, that's individuals, firms, corporations, trusts, business trusts, and so on and so forth. That is a very important piece of information. The second part is, this is from the ordinance of the City of Apapka, chapter 66. It says, "No person, as defined previously, shall engage in or manage any type of business without paying their business tax receipt." As the mayor said, before 2007, it used to be known as the occupational license. So the goal of this project is to assist you in identifying individuals and businesses that are not paying their business tax receipt. Quite honestly, I look at it as not a tax, but a fee for an inventory of who is doing what where within the jurisdiction of the city. So it's really very simple. It's helpful for everyone, for the fire department, police department, code enforcement, zoning, for every department within the city itself. So it is very beneficial. And based on data, which we will show in this chart over here, so what you see over here is, if I bring your attention to this box over here, comparative increase, so based on the data from the state, the growth of number of corporations, just number of corporations alone within the city's jurisdiction, is 270% between 1990 and 2020. While the growth in BTR fees revenue has gone up 19%. That's data. This is not studies. This is not a professor saying something. This is real data. And these are the companies that are currently operating between 1990 and 2020. The ones that are currently active are 4,122. Out of that number, 864 of them only are paying for business tax receipt. So going after them is not going after them in a bad way. We just, we noticed that the majority, 70% of the companies, individuals that not pay their business tax receipt, they just do not know that they're supposed to pay it. They're not just, they're not trying to cheat. They really do not know. So it's more educational. Out of the 864, this is their principal location, the different counties. So you could see only 1,402 are within Orange County. And from that number, 862 are within the jurisdiction of the city itself. So if you look at this example of revenue, average revenue per entity or individuals that, based on the revenue that the city has been collecting for the last several years or many years, is about $100 per taxpayer. So based on these numbers, with 8,000 delinquent, you're looking, with our fees, without penalty, is $600,000 in revenue. With penalty, if we charge them, because you're supposed to charge them up to 25% in penalty per year, that would be $800,000. So it doesn't come out of, you know, you still get the whole full 100%. As far as the business tax receipt is applicable to every business, occupation, and/or profession within the jurisdiction. It also goes by size, type, or both of which. And that's all from chapter 205 of Florida statutes or chapter 66 of the City of Apapka's ordinance. And the benefits is, number one, you're not raising any taxes, you're just collecting taxes. You know, you're enforcing the law. You know, it is the law. Number two is, it enhances compliance with city ordinance, because now the war spreads out and people start to become more and more compliant. And number three, it really helps you as a city, as every department within the city, to discover all the resources that exist locally over here, so that you could utilize these resources during emergencies such as a hurricane or any other emergency. And the local money stays local, rather than hiring big companies that come in to help. And that is, that money is also reimbursable by FEMA when it comes to reimbursement after a disaster. So, and the Orange County Controller recommended to the tax collector back in 1999, 2004, 2006, and 2012, to utilize the same data that we are currently using. So it took that many years. And we're the only company, as far as we know, that does that. Because out of all the municipalities... Because out of all the municipalities we talked to, no one has ever been approached by our proposal. Thank you very much, I'm ready for questions.
Any, any questions, Mr. Nasser?
Yeah, well, you said you, you, well, Mr. Hitt said that you've already kind of discovered there were six thousand.
Corporations, yes.
Already. So how did you find six thousand?
That's what we do. We have the technology. We have the technology to do that.
Okay. So kind of go back, because I, I'm trying to understand your, your business. I don't want to punish our residents who are, have a business and maybe, like you said, sometimes they don't realize they need to kind of come and pay a tax receipt. So now, who is going to notify them that whatever their business is requires them to pay a tax receipt? I mean, you're going to uncover them as doing the business.
We are.
We already identify them.
So, I mean, but we don't, so.
We are.
I'm kind of confused, because if we don't have the staff to find them, now we have to.
We will be assisting in all of that process.
Say that again.
We will be, we will be assisting in this whole process. That's what we do. We will assist in this whole process.
You will assist in that process.
Yes, but we only do what is approved by the city.
Right.
We do not do anything that is outside the city. We do not exist as far as.
So you have a, an amount that says no penalty and a penalty. So at what point is there a penalty? If we're uncovering their business and now notifying them, I hope in a nice way to say, we realize you have a business, you haven't paid a tax receipt.
Right.
Is there a timeframe for that business to pay?
Yes, it's defined in the ordinance, in you, in chapter sixty-six, as well as in chapter two oh five of Florida statutes. It is well-defined. So if they, the, the tax, the business tax receipt is owed by September thirtieth of every year.
Right.
That's why it's renewable every year, so that the local governing authority is able to account to keep a current inventory of what's going on locally. So that's the whole purpose of it. And by October first, if they do not pay, then they owe five percent, ten percent, I'm sorry. It goes up five percent for the following months, up to twenty-five percent per year. That's by, by statute.
I, I still don't understand this business kind of.
Sure. It is, so.
Product that you're trying to present to us? Because for me is, there's got to be a staff on, in city hall to now follow up with this. So now, he brings us, and I'm just going to say, he said he found six thousand. He's now going to bring us six thousand businesses that somehow our city staff has to keep track of, on top of the ones we already have.
Commissioner, what will happen is, so if he, if he comes back with six thousand, I think the number is high, I don't think it will be that many, but if he comes back with six thousand, what he will give us is the information that we can import into our system to bill those business tax. So most of the work will be done in our system. Yeah, we will have to mail them out, but they will, I, I'm, my understanding is they won't all come at one time. He will give us five hundred, or he will give us three hundred. As he finds them, we will put them in our system to make sure we have them going forward. But we will also bill them at that time, or with a nice letter, we'll follow up with saying, "You haven't paid your tax, your business tax, no, please remit your business tax." So we plan to, we don't plan to go back, we're trying to get these people on track going forward. So this will be a mechanism that will help us to make our system current and up to date, and make sure we have everybody in our system. So the staff will have to put them in a system, the system will generate the business tax receipt, we will mail them, and then they will send those payments to us.
It's the same thing as the water bill. We didn't, we didn't back, we didn't back charge anybody.
No, I don't want to back, we won't charge anyone. But I want to be able, because will we be able to verify if that business is still a revenue generating, generating business for that, for that business owner, you know?
Absolutely. But if you want to go by the letter of the law, which is pretty much as dictated in every profession, and there's four hundred and sixty-seven professions within the state, every profession has to get a license from the state.
Right.
Right? So they do have to pay for that license once every two years. So it doesn't matter whether they make money or do not make money, they still have to get that license.
Okay, that, that was going to be my question.
Yes.
Even, because even if they renew their license and not, and, and they're not in business, they're not generating a revenue, but they're just renewing their license, they are still required to.
By law.
By law to file a tax receipt.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a little education for me.
Yes, absolutely, that's why I'm, I'm here.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely, please.
And so this proposal, I'm, you know, it's so funny, I want to do this, because it's not here.
Tell me, tell me where to go, I'll, I'll go.
There was, I think, page three, where you said.
This one?
Was that the last page? Okay. Oh.
This one?
Okay, regulated professions, four sixty-seven. Okay, the page before that, it's okay. By eight hundred, eight thousand delinquent businesses potential. Okay, that was that one. These numbers are reasonable and exclude two hundred and fifty penal, two hundred and fifty dollars penalties based on the city ordinance. Can you explain that one to me?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So if you don't pay your, your business tax on time, you have to pay a penalty. So if you pay late, every month you pay late, there's a penalty, there's a different penalty schedule. So what this means is, if we submit, if we find someone that doesn't have a business tax that should, and we submit them a, a layer or receipt to, to pay your business tax, if they elect not to pay that tax once we've notified them, and they delay that payment for months and don't contact us, they will be assessed a penalty.
And that's the penalty under our city ordinance?
Under our ordinance, correct, Commissioner.
Well, that's a, that's a stiff penalty. What's, what's the average tax receipt when they?
No, I think, I think this penalty is a bigger, is, is more than one person. It's not, it's not two hundred and fifty dollars for each, if you're late on your business tax. Your business tax may be a hundred dollars. And, you know, you might tell me what the amount is, but your percentage amount is not, it wouldn't be two hundred and fifty dollars on a hundred dollars.
Okay.
It's a smaller percentage than that.
It's about, it starts at thirty, and goes up to two fifty.
Right, goes up to that. So you wouldn't be assessed two fifty.
You know, I just feel like we're kind of going in the business of being a collection agency, and then I feel like we're punishing our, our really home and small businesses. I, I don't want to be unfriendly, I just don't want to come across that way.
Well, we typically don't, something like this wouldn't necessarily go after the home occupational. These are, these are businesses that have gone into business, they've established a corporation. I ran a business for, for eleven years, and I knew about an occupational license for, for that, and it was a small business. Anybody that operates or, or gets a corporation and is conducting business or wants to hold on to that license, so they could eventually do it even, and that's, that's not necessarily all of these, they should be paying a tax for that, that they're in, that they're in the city. There are businesses that have, that have paid the county business, BTR, but they've neglected to pay us. So they've established a business and they, they're in our city and they are not paying. So we're, we're just collecting what is duefully due to us for them conducting a, a business in the City of Apopka. Every other, those other two thousand businesses that we do have licenses for, they're doing what they should be doing in the first place.
Okay.
And apparently, there's quite a few others that don't. And Mr. Nasser, you know, he, I know he's done this for other cities in, in the state of Florida. I know that Claremont had actually done something very similar and found a few hundred thousand dollars, so.
So his rate is twenty-five percent, I mean.
Twenty-five percent of what's, what's collected.
We can't negotiate that.
That's, that's a normal amount that they would do.
Whatever we bring you.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent of what we bring you.
It's twenty-five percent of what you bring us?
Yes.
Okay.
So if it's a hundred dollar business tax receipt, we get seventy-five, he gets twenty-five. You know, it's real simple.
And that's one time, Commissioner.
Yes.
That's one time, so after that, there's no more.
We have a record of that business at that point.
Right.
And so how, what's the length of, of this proposal, his contract with the city?
I believe it's a one, one year with a two-year renewal.
And each time there's a renewal, it will come before us? It won't be automatic?
I believe.
No, it would be automatic if we decide to roll over. The problem is, if it did roll over, he would only get, if he finds new ones in addition to these that, not the ones he's found now. It would have to be somebody new.
Correct. It's not, it's not a redo of the same one that he might have just gotten.
Right.
I'm, I'm understanding this and I, I get it, but I feel that every year, if we renew that contract, that it should come before us. So this way, the taxpayers know how we are hiring this company to help us get tax receipts. I think that that's fair. It's, for me, it's, it's transparency, just, it's not a service like the waste management or the other, that we realize it's a sole proprietor that we can keep renewing and they don't have to come before the city taxpayers. But I feel it, this is sort of like a collection agency type. I feel that it should come before us at the end of each year. I, that's how I feel. So this way, we have an idea of how much you're collecting, and it's all the service, it's his service, something that we want to continue in a partnership with him. Is that fair?
Well, we, we can, we can cancel the contract at any point in time, but again, he's only, we're only paying a twenty-five percent of what we should already be owed.
I know, it's, it's.
And it's, and he's really the only company that can actually do this.
What? Let me, let me, let me add this. Why don't we do this, Commissioners? So why don't we, why don't we do the first year? Let's do the first year, let's see what.
Right.
What he has. And let's bring back to you, when he's finished, let's bring the findings back to you.
Okay.
I think it's important. So we'll have him do the first year, we'll bring the findings back to you, because at the end of the day, you need to know how much revenue he found, that's important.
I'm, I'm here, I'm here till twenty twenty-six. So I would love to see you come every year and, and kind of tell us that your service is providing us this type of revenue and collection. I mean, for me, it's, it's, it's transparent, and it's a service that we are asking you to do for our city.
So.
So it's okay.
So let's do that. So let's do the first, let's do the first year, and then we'll come back, do a, see a presentation.
Right.
And then we can, from that point, we can decipher and go forward.
Okay.
For years.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner. Mr. Smith, Commissioner Nesta? Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just had one question. I know at one point, I don't know if it changed or not, but before you could get a county occupational license, they require you to get the Apopka one first. So that's not the case anymore?
Doesn't always happen. That's.
Same with the water bills, they should be, shouldn't have had any water bills not being paid too. I mean, I, I don't disagree with you. That's, that's the reason we, we want to capture those ones, because after we've lost them, we can't, we don't have the means to find them, like he does. You know, he's going into the barber, you know, if you have to, if you're a licensed barber, you have to go get a license from Tallahassee. We don't have the, the, the resources to go find all the barbers that are licensed in Apopka. We don't have the time to go find out all the, the engineers, the architects, the, you know, any of those professional services that, that Mr. Nasser does. So that, that's what, he's, he's going to the state records and federal records where they have to be, they, to get their license, federal, state licenses, and say, okay, oh, now he matches that up with City of Apopka, says, oh, you're in the City of Apopka, why aren't you paying your BTR?
Commissioner Nesta?
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
If, I'm, I'd like to add something. Would you feel good if you are paying for a service that you're using and someone else is getting the same service and they're not paying for it? Is this fair to you? That's for some of the taxpayers, because a lot of great taxpayers are paying their dues. I'm sorry. A lot of taxpayers are paying the dues.
Sure.
And they're coming on their own.
Sure.
But when others do not pay, and there is a budget requirement for the fire department, the police department, and other departments, someone has to pay the difference. So is it fair for some taxpayers not pay their portion and get the benefit, while others pay and not get the benefit? I'll tell you very honestly, I'm a taxpayer, I pay my property taxes, I pay for the school, I've never had children, I don't, I plan to have children, and I probably will never get children. But in either, because I'm not married, that's the reason, my thing. But, so the point is that fairness exists from both sides. So it's something I would appreciate that you would consider in your decision. Go ahead, sir.
Sure, so just on your first slide.
Sure.
The date is incorrect on there, just want to make sure these stats are providing us.
Well, that was the original date we gave the city the presentation.
That's the date you gave us the presentation?
Originally, we gave the city management the presentation.
Yeah, okay. Wow, okay.
Well, I mean, it does take.
That was a long time ago.
It's, it's, it's shocking to, and there's COVID, it was COVID time, it's shocking concept. When you look at this chart that I have in front of you, it is really shocking. But this is data, this is real companies that have renewed their businesses every year with the state. This data was renewed last May. So.
Did you see an increase with COVID? Because I feel that with COVID for the two years, many people kind of.
Absolutely. Just within the, I mean, this data is as of November twentieth. I have another, I mean, the set, the new set data that's not incorporated in this chart, because I, I don't like to mix two things together.
Okay.
It's, the, the state added over four hundred and fifty-three thousand companies in the last nine months only. So it is, a lot of companies are coming to Florida. And central Florida is way on top. And Orange County is over two hundred thousand companies already that are active. So, and you asked the question about the city versus the county. Anyone that is within the city jurisdiction has to pay the city and the county and the state.
Right, that's why I asked.
Yes. So, but, yeah. And the county is supposed to pay you back, the county is supposed to pay you back your portion based on population. So from their, their BTR revenue, they're supposed to pay you back based on the fifty-three thousand citizens that exist within the jurisdiction, or constituents that exist within jurisdictions of this, of the City of Apopka.
So, yeah, so I understand your business model, and, and it's one that, I mean, effectively, you go on sunbiz.org, search every business that's registered in the City of Apopka, match it with our records, and, and there you go, there's your list.
Unfortunately, it's not that simple.
I feel that it is, and that's neither here nor there. Again, you do have value, I get it. My concern is this, this effectively is a collection agency.
No, it's not. It's identification of individuals that are not paying.
And then you find them, and then you take a portion of that. Same way you would if you default on your credit card, car payment, things like that.
Yes, but we coordinate with, we work for the government agency. We do not go and collect it from individuals or businesses. You know what I mean? We, we do the work for the government agency, but we work for them. We coordinate everything through them.
Okay. It's, we'll call that semantics, I, it's still collecting on a, an open bill. My, my concern, and having been on this opposite side, when I'm a young entrepreneur, you drop the ball on some things every now and then, especially when you're starting a family, things like that. So I've gotten the calls of, you need to pay your business tax license, totally forgot about it. I, I don't want it to be a disincentive to have a business in Apopka. So let's say they started a business a year ago, six months ago, whatever it may be, I know that you said there's some leeway time there. I, I'm really against having any type of penalties be charged. Let's just collect what we do, and, and that's, that's it. Additionally, I don't want this to be like a headhunting, like, like, put them on spheres and you, it's, as much as we're saying this is going to be nice, collecting is still collecting, and that's kind of comes with aggression. Again, I don't want to be this, a disincentive to be part of Apopka's business community. So I know you can see, a nice letter is not a nice letter when it says, "You owe us."
Well, Commissioner, here's the thing, you have to realize, there's a state statute that requires everybody to pay this. We can't select few, we have to treat everybody the same. So what, what our plan is though, is when, if, as they. same. So what our plan is though, is when, as they find them, we will send a notice out, just like we do everybody else on a regular basis. They will have a period of time to pay. If they don't pay, they'll be penalized, just like the normal people would in the normal process. We're not going to go back and penalize them. We don't plan to go back. We don't plan to go back and collect prior. We're just saying, we found you, you're a business currently, here's what you owe, and we'll have them pay that going forward. So basically, it's just finding those people that aren't paying that may not know and bringing them on in compliance, basically.
Sure. And I'm okay with that. That doesn't bother me at all. I mean, I get it because to your point, if I'm paying it, I want everyone else to pay it just as much. The other thing that I do want to echo Commissioner Velazquez is that I do want some type of performance review. I think that's very important because if, I want to know, are our business owners, if I start hearing that, hey, they're harassing me, I'm getting these letters, I'm not happy, this isn't the nice letter that I was told, I want to know that. We need to stop it pretty quickly. So I do think that we need to be having and ensuring that there are reviews, at the very least annually, and if not, every six months or quarterly, I think it's very important. So.
If I may interject, because some of the language, the road this language is taking is concerning me on a legal basis on the part of the liability of the city. We cannot pick and choose who we're going to enforce the code against, or the manner in which the code is going to be enforced, whether they're a nice guy or a deadbeat. If you do that, it opens the door for the city to be subject as part of a defense and trying to collect to a latches defense on the part of the, of the person who owes, who says, well, you didn't enforce it last time, so you no longer have a right to enforce it against me.
Well, can't you say that?
This is similar to, this is, this, no, this is similar to, the statute and the ordinance provide, BTRs are due on a certain date. If they are not paid on a certain date, they are then subject to collection. Whether or not we hire a third party to actually identify who's to be collected, or we do our own investigation to determine who owes. The ordinance and the statute provide, provide that this amount of time, they're subject to this percentage of a delinquent fee for being late. Your credit card doesn't look at sometimes and say, well, you're a nice guy, we're not going to charge you a $35 late fee. You're going to get charged a late fee. And this is the same case here. Property, just like property owners have constructive notice as to those rules that regulate their property, a business owner has constructive notice that they're subject to a business tax receipt, that is subject to both state statute and city and county ordinances. And the state provides down to the local governments how they're going to enforce such a mechanism. And we cannot pick and choose who we're going to go after, who we're not going to go after. Because it'll prevent, it'll present itself in problems at a later date if we're lenient or if we elect not to go after somebody for not paying their BTR in 2023, when they do so again in 2024 and 2025, and then we elect to go after them, they may be able to affirm, to provide an affirmative defensive latches in stating, you guys knew I was late and you didn't come after me, and now you're precluded from coming after me from here forward. That applies to code enforcement. It's happened and the appellate courts of Florida have determined, if you know there's a violation, you become aware of a violation and you do not enforce it, then the violator is subject to basically having as a defense, well, you can't enforce it against me now because you knew I was in violation and you didn't come after me the first time. So I'm kind of being direct here because it's, you're opening yourself to selective and subjective enforcement. The code and statutes are crystal clear. The issue, and it's scaled based on time. And I know that you were shocked when you heard, well, we don't want to fine folks $250. Well, that penalty is statutory. And that penalty is subject to do if you have not paid your BTR after 150 days of being notified that you owe the money. And I think the taxpayers of the city would be appalled if we elected, well, $250 is a lot, is a lot of money. We don't want to go after someone who has not paid their, who's not paid their BTR in five months. So, excuse me. So it's relative. I don't, don't want to go under this avenue of subjective enforcement. It's got to be objective across the board. The ordinance and the statute are crystal clear on how these are enforced and the penalties that are subject to violations of both ordinance and statute.
I understand. I understand what you're saying. I get it. But there's a reason why he's here now. We haven't been enforcing it. So you can say that we've already.
No, we haven't. It's not a question of not being enforced. It's a question of not having notice of those who, we, there is a lack of manpower in finding the violators. It's basically like stating, we're not actively, if we only have one officer to investigate the entire jurisdiction, it doesn't mean we're not enforcing it. It means we haven't gotten to that, to that point. If now we have an assistance where what this opens the door is for additional officers to help assist, assisting the investigation to then permit the enforcement to go forward.
I understand. The point is, I don't want this to be an attack on our businesses. So if we, as long as we can do that in a way that is not a disincentive to be opening and continuing business in Apopka, I'm fine with it. But I do want a review annually of this.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Nasser, for Mr. Hitt or Mr. Bass?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
And I agree with you. I started my first business in 1995. I opened in Omando. And within one year, we became the largest internet service provider.
Either you want to talk, you got to talk in front of the mic.
Yeah. Sorry. Within the first year, we became the number one internet service provider in central Florida. And this is my company number six. Jesse.
Got it.
Thank you.
All right. Let me open up. Anybody in the, from the public want to speak on this issue?
Roger's back at Seven West Main Street. Just a question. So let's say, for example, we get a significant amount of income from the business tax receipts. Where would that go? Just to the general fund?
We've got 150,000, I think, allocated toward additional BTR.
So is it basically just for additional personnel or is it going to be anything that assists businesses?
It's just in the budget. It's just a part of the budget.
Okay.
Kyle Becker, 1388 Kinsler Road. Commissioner Nesta brought up the points. It was just odd timing because this was presented in '21, but nothing was brought to council. So if they're saying that they could have recovered what was in that presentation, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars that had been left on the table over the last year and a half. I can't think that this is proprietary information. I mean, again, you can go and pull this data from sunbiz.org. If it's a federal company doing business within Apopka, you can get those data sources. And it's a simple V lookup to data that we would have readily available within our own city of who's paid or not paid business tax. So I would just ask the council to do some simple math and say, how much would a full-time resource, if like the city attorney mentioned, we have a lack of resource or workforce to be able to do this, do the cost that it would take someone to do it, divide, or divide that number by .25, and that's how much money you've got to go and get to pay for that resource to do this on an annual basis or year-long, to make sure that we don't leave this type of money on the table going forward. So do that analysis first before we even vote on this. But to say that this is some sort of proprietary software that he's the only person that can do something like this, I find that to be a far stretch. So, thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Come back and look for a motion to authorize the waiver of the city's procurement process.
Sylvester Hall, 391 Roland Hills Lane. I'll be very brief. When we look at staffing, and he said it just plain as clear, we don't have the staff. Why is that song being completely played? We don't have the staff. We don't have the staff. Yes.
All right. Looking for a motion to authorize the waiver of the city's procurement process in order to negotiate and prove a contract with TCF for one year for the identification of taxpayers that are delinquent in payment or attainment of their BTR.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2935.
Ordinance number 2935. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural, one dwelling unit per 10 acres, to city mixed use, seven and a half to 20 dwelling units per acre, per, to 1.0 floor area ratio for certain real property generated, generally located on the northwest corner of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, owned by PMS1REO LLC, Harvey Godwin, SAP Rodney D Life Estate REM, Sandra D SAP, comprising 21.36 acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and ineffective date.
Jim, any changes? No changes. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2935.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2936.
Ordinance number 2936. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county A1 citrus rural to city KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, and assigning Village Center Overlay District for certain real property generally located in the northwest corner of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, comprising 21.36 acres more or less, and owned by PMS1REO LLC, Harvey Godwin, SAP Rodney D Life Estate REM, Sandra D SAP, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Jim, any changes?
No changes.
No changes. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2936. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2942.
Ordinance number 2942. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from future land use in progress and mixed use, 15 dwelling units per acre and 1.0 floor area ratio, to residential low suburban, two dwelling units per acre for certain real property generally located on the northeast corner of Poncan Road and Poncan Pines Road, owned by Roseville Farms LLC and Roseville Farms LLC, comprising 31.5 acres more or less, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Any changes, Jim? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2942.
Before we do that, I just want to read this quick comment. I know we were all giving it, but let me just read it out loud for everybody. It's from Jim Riffle, 2536 West Poncan Road in Apopka. He says, Dear Mayor and Commissioners, I spoke before you with regard to the MI homes development at the first reading. My concerns remain the same. Safety. The proposed access for the new homes producing 650-plus new car trips per day is in a dangerous and deadly curved area of Poncan Road. It is in a signalized school zone. It is directly opposite the Wakava Run Community Entry, one of three. It is in an area prone to flooding during storms. It is in an area prone to accidents. The accident pictured is from last week at the proposed access. Should this development move forward, you must find a way to mitigate safety issues in this immediate area. The traffic impact analysis for this project includes a number of suggestions to do so. They favor the developer but fall short in my opinion. Poncan Road is a county-maintained road, and I have addressed my concerns to our Orange County Commissioner but had no comment. I know of no present or planned improvements to Poncan Road. Part of my absence, I previously scheduled MRI on my left knee. If not so, I would be there. Thank you for your opportunity to present my concerns. Jim Riffle. He did present before. I just want to make sure that that was in the record and that we did obviously acknowledge that. And that is a county road. So I know they're doing road studies on, on kind of this northwest corridor of Apopka. So.
I know Pam, I mean, Pam's got that, it's, I don't know if you want to address that just to kind of reiterate what was stated last week.
It is a county road, and I have talked to Orange County about it. I have not accepted the traffic study yet, and we're going to work through this, the city and Orange County together, just like we worked through all the issues on the county roads. This applicant was told when they came in, you need to go to talk to Orange County about access because there's a problem there. There's a solution. We'll find it.
Okay. And so you are working with Orange County?
I've been working with Orange County on this project since the day they, I was the one that sent it over to them and said, look, we've got this project. This is a difficult location. Same as I do for all the projects on county roads.
So, I mean, yeah, because I've reached out to Commissioner Moore, and I do know that the transportation gentleman that's in, that is in charge in Orange County actually lives in our city. The one thing that concerns me is that before we move forward with these two projects, is there something that's going to come to let us know that that road is being addressed? I mean, are we going to allow the, we have to let the project go forward, but.
This is a site plan that will be coming back before.
Is the, I'm sorry?
This is a site plan that will be coming back before planning commission and city council. This is a land use and zoning vote at this stage.
Okay.
But the site plans, anything, anything over 25 units or it, basically my discretion, if there's an issue that, similar to like this, I would always bring it back before council.
Okay.
Yeah.
As long as we're actively kind of pursuing the infrastructure.
Yes, we are.
Which is the road.
Pam is in contact with Orange County practically every day.
Okay. Because I just, you know, when, when our residents hear us and we say, okay, that's a county road, we're almost saying, it's not our problem.
We don't always say that.
What we should be saying is, we are working with the county.
That's what we do.
And we are going to get a solution and resolve the problem.
Yes, ma'am. We do that.
Okay.
We don't say it's a county road and that's all. We add that coordination and we contact Orange County to let them know that we have a project and it, like Pam mentioned, this, if it's an issue or a questionable area, we definitely do.
And the only reason why I'm saying that is because our county commissioner, she does tune into our.
Sure.
She tunes into our city.
She's responsive for us. That's it.
Especially because she sees what's on the agendas. And then she will call me and, you know, we talk. And the one thing that she doesn't want, you know, the City of Apopka, the residents to feel that she's not involved. And she is, as she has, on many, numerous times has told me, that call me, work with me, I'm there. And that's what I want.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2942.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2943.
Ordinance number 2943. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from MUESGT Mixed Use East Shore Gateway Sub District to RSF1B Residential Single Family Large Lot District for certain real property generally located on the northeast corner of Poncan Road and Poncan Pines Road, comprising 31.5 acres more or less, and owned by Roseville Farms LLC and Roseville Farms LLC, providing for severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Any changes?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2943.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2945.
Before I read the ordinance, there's been a change in the ordinance number 2945 where the ownership is, prior to this, it said it owned by Kelly Park Road Ventures LLC, but they're no longer.
A part of it?
A part of it.
Okay.
So Kelly, I'm sorry, Kelly Park?
Kelly Park Road Ventures LLC is no longer a part of this ordinance.
Would we have to do a first reading again?
No, that's why we're here. It's second reading to announce the change to the ordinance.
Okay.
And it's only in the title, not the subject of change to the ordinance.
Cool.
Okay. Ordinance number 2945. In ordinance of the City of Apopka.
In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from rural settlement to mixed use for certain real property generally located north of Kelly Park Road, east of Round Lake Road and west of Effie Drive. Owned by Kelly Park Land Investments LLC fifty percent interest, Harris KP LLC fifty percent interest, comprising of a total of forty-five point nine three acres, more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Jim, other than the one change, nothing else?
No changes on this one, I'm guessing that'll apply with the next one, too.
Okay, all right. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine forty-five. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-nine forty-six.
Ordinance number twenty-nine forty-six. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from AG Agricultural to city KPI MU, Kelly Park interchange mixed use and assigning transition and village center overlay district. For certain real property generally located north of Kelly Park Road, east of Round Lake Road and west of Effie Drive. Owned by Kelly Park Land Investments LLC fifty percent interest, Harris KP LLC fifty percent interest, comprising forty-five point nine three acres, more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes?
Other than, other than taking off the Ventures LLC, okay.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine forty-six.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-one.
Ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-one. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from commercial to residential low for certain real property generally located on the southwest intersection of Central Avenue and Seventh Street. Owned by Marion B. White and Felicia Denise Aiken, comprising point thirty-four acres, more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Jim, any changes? No changes to, all right. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-one.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-two.
Ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-two. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential low, five dwelling units per acre, to agriculture, one dwelling unit per, five acres. For certain real property generally located west of Benyon Road and north of Clear Lake Estates Residential Subdivision. Owned by Citrus Ridge Real Estate LLC, comprising nineteen point eleven acres, more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Jim?
No changes, ma'am.
No changes, okay.
No changes.
Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-two.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-three.
Ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-three. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from RSV one B, residential single-family large lot to AG Agricultural for certain real property generally located west of Benyon Road and north of Clear Lake Estates Residential Subdivision, comprising nineteen point eleven acres, more or less, and owned by Citrus Ridge Real Estate LLC, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes?
No changes, ma'am.
Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-three.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-six.
Ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-six. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida. Owned by Simpson D. Wayne fifty percent interest, Simpson Suzie F. fifty percent interest, Laxby Land Investment LLC and Sessions Plymouth LLC, located on the southwest corner of Peterson Road and State Road four twenty-nine, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability conflicts and an effective date.
Jim, any changes?
No changes, ma'am.
All right, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-six.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta? Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-nine.
Ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-nine. In ordinance of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Apopka by amending part three, Land Development Code, Article One, General Provisions, Section one point two authority by creating section one point two point three development fees, by repealing ordinance seven two five in its entirety, by repealing section two dash ninety-six, land development fees in its entirety, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and setting an effective date.
No changes, ma'am.
No changes, okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-nine fifty-nine.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-nine sixty.
Ordinance number twenty-nine sixty. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, adopting the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, five-year capital improvement annual update, providing for legislative findings, providing for exclusion from codification, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Bradley, any changes to this?
Well, this is the first reading.
Oh, yes, I guess the first changes, come on up.
The, real quick, as a, as a real quick summary, Bradley will cover the basic, the main information. This is a capital improvements program element for the city comprehensive plan. If you recall, about a year ago, we went through the same type of program in order to, amendment to the comprehensive plan in order to get a grant. And one of the requirements is to update the comprehensive plan with, with the capital improvements program for parks and recreation. So each year we go through this process to pop these things into the comprehensive plans so that we can get grants to do different, different things in our parks and recreation system. It also allows us to to formulate all the different types of programs and projects that we have in our Parks and Recreation Department. So it's a, it's a, it's kind of a good formulation for that, for the department itself. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bradley and let him give you the details.
Thank you. Bradley Williams, Parks and Rec Director, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. To build on what Mr. Hitt just described, this again is for purposes of applying for a FERDAP grant, a Florida Recreation Development Assistant Program grant. We were applying for two hundred thousand dollar matching grant. So that'd bring the project up to four hundred thousand dollars if we were to attain the grant. We did hold one public input meeting for this inclusive playground. Did not see the results we wanted as far as input, so we will be looking back to advertise and schedule one for later this fall to, to gather that input for the, for the inclusion playground. As far as the grant timeline, we do expect to hear a decision on the grant by this upcoming spring. So this was adding the inclusive playground to the Comp Plan CIP, which helped gain additional points in the grant application.
Any questions for Bradley?
No, we, we, and you're correct. The first public meeting, we didn't have a public input, but you did promise that we will have a second public meeting that would allow our residents to come and have an input to the elements for the inclusive parks, so.
Absolutely.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions for Bradley? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-nine sixty at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, the second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-four. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, adopting a fee schedule as authorized by Article One, Section one point two, subsection one point two point three, Land Development Code Part Three, Code of Ordnances of the city of Apopka, Florida, and providing for an effective date.
Pam?
This is accompanies the ordinance that you just approved that we did away with, ordinance seven twenty-five, our old land development review fees. And when I was here at last meeting, I think it was last meeting, yeah, last meeting, I showed you the comparison table of what our old fees were, what our proposed new fees are, Orange County and some other comparisons in that analysis. And so you have this in your packet, I, I don't know how well you can see it, but this, this is the final table of the land development fees. It's everything that we, you saw before, except for Commissioner Nesta, we included what you asked, actually, it was in our old land development fees, but it was buried in, in some weird language, so what we added was, let's, oh, I took the lines out. Revision to.
I see, recent middle of development plans.
After three semitals, we had it in there before, but it was like half of whatever. We looked at everything that it applies to. Those fees are a thousand dollars, so we just put it in there at a flat fee. But everything else is exactly as you saw before. And so we're asking you to bring us into the twenty twenties, take us out of nineteen ninety-two and allow us to charge the fees that are in line with everybody else's. But that's not exactly what you should say when you make the.
Any questions for Pam on this one? Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta? Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty-two dash forty-five.
Resolution number twenty-two dash forty-five. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, providing for a budget amendment.
Mayor Commissioners, um, resolution twenty-two forty-five is a budget amendment for your state pension dollars. As you know, every year we receive state pension dollars for police and fire fund. We have a certain period of time to get those into those pension funds. This, we have received those dollars, this is the amendment to, to move those money into those funds for a total of nine hundred eighty-one thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars.
Any questions for Edward? Okay, anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash forty-five.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen? Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, city council reports. Mr. Nesta, why don't you start us out?
Yeah, so I got a couple of different things, I want to kind of have a little bit of dialogues, a little feedback from everybody up here, including maybe some staff as well. Wanted to first talk about the noise ordinance or that, I know we spoke about weeks, maybe at last meeting or whichever meeting it was. I know it's specifically a noise ordinance is, is going to be very difficult to enforce, things like that, so I just don't want the conversation to die, I think there does need to be something implemented, I just don't know what that looks like, but again, I don't, I want us to still kind of keep that open and have some, some dialogue one way or the other, without burdening our law enforcement officers or infringing on kind of each resident's rights as well, so there's got to be a balance somewhere, and I just want to make sure that we're kind of up here keeping that in mind and, and maybe coming up with some unique ways to fix that. Next is, and I'm sure you guys have seen it on social media and maybe residents have, have contacted you about it, Car Wash is in Apopka, I'm hearing that's the new Dollar Store, it's the new fast food. So I would ask you to pull the recordings from the previous DRC meetings, not this week's, but last week's and the week before. Just listen to their dialogue about that, I think that would be really important to just hear what DRC's input is on, on Car Washes, things like that. Again, we don't, we want to be a little more proactive versus reactive, which we've done in the past. Next, want to talk about Golden Gem Road. Pam, I, I don't mean to beat this one anymore, but you don't need to get up or anything, I just, it's, it's something that we definitely need to keep in mind, I know now Commissioner Moore is on board and, and we have a study that's going on with that now, I want that to be something that we all have our, our pulse on so that we understand what's going on there, and, and one thing too, Planning Commission had brought this up, that we should just take the road now, fix it ourselves, which is a big amount of money and it's, it's tough to do, but at the same time, on our website, it lists on the Planning Zoning Division responsibilities, ensuring the availability of adequate infrastructure and school facilities. Either we need to change that or do it. So I know, again, it's, it's in Orange County Road, but, and, and I know that Commissioner Moore is on, on board and, and working on this, it's just, let's bring her in and as commissioners, I think we need to have a little more dialogue with Commissioner Moore and bringing this to her attention and, and again, more of a partnership versus an attack or, or finger pointing. Speaking of the website itself, we still have Rock Springs Ridge info on there from like twenty nineteen. I think we should pull that off because it still talks about a land swap, things like that. Information that's not relevant at all. I'd like to clean that up and, and get that off of there, I think it's a little misleading. Wanted to reference, just because this is my first budget season that we went through and, and what a season it was. What I like to do when I'm going through a project or, and I finish one, I know my wife and I like to do this, is we do what's called a SWOT analysis, we go over our strengths, what do we do great through this process, what were our weaknesses? Where could we have done better, and then what were our threats and, and some of the things that, you know, came up during budgeting, I, I just think that possibly, I know that we've done it in the past to where it's presented to us without a lot of input, we do have some, but I think if we come in beforehand and, and maybe meet with department heads, once you guys kind of have a pretty firm preliminary budget, we won't have any blind sides up here. So I, I just want to make sure that we're all kind of working and have resolve up here that we can kind of work together and, and maybe not have as much animosity, or I don't know what the correct verbiage is there, but just something that can make us be a little more cohesive as a council. I think we, it would just help in, in conversations and we don't have any surprises during the workshops. Additionally, one, and one that was kind of a blind side was just the Merrill salary increase, it's just something that I think we should have discussed upfront, it wasn't during any of our budget workshops and I just think that that should have been something we, we should have discussed it. It, it, we talked about every other increase that we're seeing and, and again, I, just something we should have brought up because I think that it was kind of squeaked in at the end and we were so focused on fire that we didn't get to discuss, and I, again, all I ask is next year or whatever it is, just please let us discuss it upfront. And let us go from there. Additionally, in, in, in reference to budgeting and moving forward, a lot of our department heads are awesome and great, but they're retiring in the next five years, I mean, I can see most of them in the back right now, they're, we're not going to have them around here long, so I hate to see them go, but we need to have a succession plan. I see, Jim, I know, Pam, Chief? I see you guys, so I think we just need to have some type of succession plan or at least be, again, communicated with the council that we have something moving forward, it's, it's a big concern of mine, just, It's a big concern of mine, just, I, you know, I'm raising my family here and I want to make sure that we're not being left out in the next 15, 20 years, whatever it is, that we have some type of plan that's in place that creates success for our city long term. Next one, I just want to confirm that we are moving our funds completely out of reserves and into an operating account for AFD to be able to move from October 1. That's not something that's going to slowly come out. It's going to come out day one into an operating account that they can spend and just start doing what they need to do. Okay. And then this is more so to the Fire Chief. Do we have any plans for kind of what are, moving forward, our outreach plans are? I know at one point you'd said, you know, we'll go to Jacksonville, we'll go wherever we need to go. Do you guys have any plans in place that are implemented that, or that you've discussed that you're going to implement to do a little more outreach? We've got a big fund now available for you to use. I just want to see if you have any plans that you've already put in place or that you're just working on.
Yeah, we're cer-, excuse me, Sean Wyman, Fire Chief, we're certainly moving forward with a lot of different projects. You know, one of the things with reassigning some of our duties, they were going to have certain site-specific targets, the schools, you know, school outreach too, like we discussed in our meeting with the graduations, things like that. One thing we're developing right now is a poster, for lack of a better word, but to list some of our highlights of things, benefits we offer, things like that, to get kind of outreach, social media, things like that. So certainly things and working projects. It's also something we're pretty excited about. We were running with the school board recently with the high school students. And kind of general grassroots approach we've done before, where we've gone to the different community events and things like that to attract new things. So there's certainly plans in place, and once we start, you know, moving forward that, we'll definitely keep...
Awesome. Well, let me know if you need any of our help to go to schools or anything like that. Let us come to support you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Let us know when those dates are and invite us, and we'll be there. We love being interactive however we can and sell us. We want to sell Apopka, so however we can support you, just let us know.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. And then the last one is just South Apopka annexation. I know we've talked about, hey, after budgets, we're going to do it, end of October. Let's set a date tonight. What date can we make? I mean, let's look at our calendars, let's set it. Yeah.
We, staff can be ready at the end of October if we want, if we want to do it in Our thoughts were, staff thoughts were, we want to have a different commission, you know, member, like the young member. We thought I might be there to wait and do it in that commission, which are common or we have them as well, which is what we're going to have, we're going to have.
So I understand that, and not to offend Commissioner Becker by any means, but I just, I don't want to delay this anymore, and we've already said that we're going to do it in October, so, and I think it would be beneficial for Banksen to be up here as well, Commissioner Banksen, excuse me, to be up here as well to have his input. By no means do I want to silence his voice up here, so, and Commissioner Becker can be a part of that conversation as well very easily. So, I mean, we can do 26th, 27th, 28th?
I mean, if you want to try to schedule, and if it works best for it to be on a Wednesday so we can have it consistent with our council meetings and be in between our two council meetings, October 12th or October 26th would be your October dates.
Probably makes sense either 26th, right? Just to buy us a little more time and kind of do it correctly. Are you guys all agreeable to that up here?
26.
Wednesday, the 26th.
I think I'll be gone 26th.
And exactly what are we going to be doing?
So Commissioner, our plans are, our staff's plans are to bring you back to process. What it would cost to, there's a big cost involved, so we have to bring you the cost. Michael can bring you the process because it's a voting process that has to take place. So our staff's plan was to bring you all the information, everything, so you have everything it takes to get, if we decide to go this route, what it would take to get there. From the funding to the process, how long it takes to annex them based on the votes that have to take place. So we were going to give you all the information so that we can, you can decide how to move forward from there.
Basically two-pronged. I think, I think what is necessary, just to kind of clarify, a lot of the information and misinformation that's out there, which is what exactly entails the annexation process. I don't think the general public is really clear on what annexation entails, the difference is, and it's, I can give a presentation on the statutory requirements of annexation, the differences between voluntary annexation and involuntary annexation, and what needs to be done, and what those differences are. I think a lot of folks just seem to believe that for starters, annexation is something that the city does, which is not the case when it comes to voluntary annexations. But if we want to structure the workshop to be basically, this is what annexation is, this is what it isn't, and if you, if the city elects to take that route, here are the potential costs. As a workshop, then the public can be invited to put in their input and comments, and then we can move forward from there. Now, any steps to move forward if it's going to be actually a concrete move to move forward to an annexation? I think the general tone of what the scuttlebutt is, I guess, out there is that most likely this would be a, for lack of a better term, not a voluntary annexation, but it would be one that would be required, a general, an election, which would require an ordinance to be passed by the city, and the ordinance would then direct for an election to be had. And it's two elections, actually. It's, one, the electors are the residents of the proposed annexed area, and the other are the electors that live in the city. And there has to be an affirmative vote from both groups to choose annexation. And I will go into the details and the requirements that the statute provides for such a process. So if it's the 26th, then if staff is directed to do so, staff will begin the process of having it, having the proper notices and advertisements done for a city council workshop.
Have we established what the boundaries would be for that?
No, that's, that's what the, that's what we can discuss.
Well, I think we probably, why don't we go back to the last one we kind of had? We had one penciled in. We could send that to the commissioners, and then if you want to, because we, based on the size, if it grows a lot or shrinks a lot, it could, the funding could be substantially different. So why don't we do this, is send it out, blind copy to each of the commissioners, what the old, what we kind of started with, Edward, and if you think it should be expanded or contracted, at least we've got, because we got to come in kind of with pretty firm, you know, geographical boundary so that we know what we're talking about. And so we'll, we can do that.
Probably just best is, instead of having to undergo the blind copy in each, we'll prepare a packet as part of the workshop, which you'll receive.
Well, but we want to have, we want to have that kind of, because the dollars will be based on how big the...
Right, well, we can have the packet as option A, option B, option C, and therefore you can, it can all be there, and we can, and those things can be discussed.
But I think it'd be a little more beneficial to kind of have some of our input before we put those numbers together to make sure that we are all on one accord, and then kind of give those options from there.
Right, well, it's, again, it's, I'm not going to speak for Edward, but all of you know that I have an open door policy. You can come into my office and discuss these and have, provide this input, and I'll work along with you, with any of you individually to proceed forward.
Okay, well, I would like to see the map, the old map that you have. I'd like to see that as soon as possible. So we can go forward.
The 26th, I will not, I'll be out of town, I do know that.
So we can have the, the 12th would be, or if we're looking at not having it, I'm just, I just proposed Wednesdays since that's normally the date that the commission meets. And if you want to come in on a Tuesday...
How long do we, how do we want to spend? Could you, we just come in before the second meeting in October?
I don't want to rush it, just in case we have a lot of public comment.
Okay.
And I think that's kind of the point, is let's hear what the public has to say, and then, I think that'll help us move forward.
I can do it the day before, I can do it on that Tuesday, the 25th, but I leave Thursday or Wednesday morning.
Unless you want to come in Tuesday, the 18th, so we'll have workshop and council meeting back-to-back or the 25th. Just, I would, I would suggest not the 11th because that's Planning Commission.
The 25th works.
25th, okay. Everybody okay with the 25th?
Okay.
October, okay. All right.
What time?
6 o'clock?
7:00 PM, just like a normal council meeting.
7 o'clock?
Seven.
Let's do 6:00.
7 is our council meeting times.
Oh, my God.
I feel this is going to be a little long of a meeting, so.
6:00. What about 5:00 PM?
I think 7:00 PM if we want to make accommodations for the public to attend, since 7:00 PM is consistent with our city council meeting times. I'm just suggesting, I'm not, I'm not mandating that it be at 7:00. But I would advise 7:00 is consistent with our regular council meeting times, and I think it gives ample time for the residents to be able to come home from work, sneak in a quick dinner, and then come to the city council meeting.
Okay.
All right. 7:00 works, let's do that, okay.
Okay, 7 on the 20, October 25th. Okay.
All right.
Perfect, thank you.
Good.
Well, I see already you're going to talk about the 9/11 and the Hispanic, so I'm not going to spend any time talking about that. We already talked about the annexation. But I would also like to let you know that I am serving on the Florida League of Cities' Land Use and Economic Development Committee, and we met last week, and we're preparing priorities that we're going to be taking to tell the ass to the legislature. And just want to get some input, make sure that we're all on the same page. We'd identified five areas, one with sovereign immunity, annexation, mobility plan, impact fees, and residential infield zoning. At the conclusion of the meeting that we held, we can only have one priority statement, so we're leaning close to the mobility plan. Feel like that affects all the cities because whatever we present has to be something that affects the entire state. So mobility plan look like it's going to be number one. Sovereign immunity is running a very close second. So we're going to be meeting again on October the 7th. And so if either one of those, you're leaning one way or the other, you want me to speak on behalf of our city, let me know so I know what direction.
Let's see where, what you've got, what their proposal is, what they're trying, I mean, what is that mobility? I don't know what that, I mean, got to be a little more specific. For me, sovereign immunity, I get, I'm all in on that one, but...
The mobility plan is, is explained, is where local municipalities can propose a fee to new development that comes into your city in place of the impact fee.
Instead of transportation impact fee?
Correct.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
The mobility fee would be where individual cities could charge a fee to developers that are coming into the cities to help with things like infrastructure, and that money would remain within the city to make those improvements. Whereas impact fees is not enough collected in order to do the infrastructure improvement that's needed. And so there was a couple of cities that was present at that meeting that are already doing the mobility fee instead of impact fee.
Instead of?
Yes. And have found it be more conducive to their needs.
Okay, I'd like to, I mean, if we've got something to look at, you know, if they've got a white page on that, I'd like to see what that looks like.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and obviously want to have Pam take a look at it, you know, and Michael.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, you can get that too, is that?
Will do.
Just, I guess if you want a proper, mobility fees is, goes beyond just simply road improvements. You're looking at complete view of all transportation needs. We're talking like full mobility, intermodal transportation, bus lines, rail lines. It's, it's a way of diverting the fees or creating fees, and then a local government creates a mobility plan, and the mobility fee funds that mobility plan. But it's a lot broader than just impact fees for road improvements. You're looking at kind of a, over a much, kind of comprehensive transportation plan. Not going to advise yet one way or another on the feasibility of such a plan for a jurisdiction of our size.
Because, see, we don't pay for links, you know, that's all funded by the county. So our mobility, I'm not sure that, and with this, the transportation tax coming up in November, a lot of that will be covered. You know, we need to get more...
I'll get you the white page.
Yeah, that would be great. Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Commissioner Banksen?
Well, I'm spinning a lot of plates now with transitioning in out and possibly transitioning in forward, and obviously the other issues here, I'll leave for you and possibly Commissioner Velasquez, especially for the Hispanic event. I'm not, I'll just leave that for you all to cover those things, so I yield my time.
Well, yeah, the Hispanic Heritage Festival, it was very nice. We had a nice attendance of residents. We had entertainment. We really enjoyed the samba, the Phoebe somber dances. They were very, they're high energy. They went out into the crowd and they got, you know, kids dancing, adults dancing. It was very nice. It was our first year, and I, you know, I admit that I wasn't, I did tell Bradley that I was praying for him, but it was very nice, and we had a perfect day, didn't rain. It was entertaining, and I think it was, it was very good for our community. It did bring out a lot of residents that were very happy for the celebration of the Hispanic month. So thank you to the City of Apopka for being, for doing this for the first year, and that it will build every year, and we hope it gets bigger and more vendors, and when we have more time to bring more vendors. There were a few vendors that didn't show because they were at different activities around the city, but overall, I enjoyed it. I stayed till the very end. We had a great speaker, Jose, from, was he from Hope or Farmarkus?
Farmarkus.
Farmarkus. He was excellent. He had the park going, the entertainment going, he was encouraging people, and at the end, he actually had karaoke.
Well, no, he was, he was from the radio station. I'm sorry, now that, he was from the radio station.
He was from the radio station?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And he's excited, wants to come back, he's ready to host it again.
Yeah, he, he really had it. Yeah, he was, he was excellent. So it was a wonderful event, and I was very, I was honored and very proud to be a part of it, so thank you. The other thing that I just kind of wanted to touch on was, yesterday we did have a meeting with Chief Wyman and Chief Howell regarding how they're moving forward with the Fire Department. The only thing that I will ask of you is, I do not want to continue to go on social media and finding out about promotions. We sat yesterday for almost an hour, and you never mentioned the in-house promotions. And then when I get home, about two hours later on social media, they announced that you had sent an internal email with these promotions. And of course, they're all within-house. So my only question to you is, are, are your promotions, are each of these individuals, what am I going to say, trained to have the positions that they are now going to be holding? And my concern was, if they had the ability to be, to have these new titles, why weren't they in place? Why wasn't anyone working to kind of be that mentor or that supervisor before Austin?
Yeah, well, to answer your first question, I always want to inform my staff personnel and all of my people.
Right.
How it gets out on social media, that's out of my hands.
When you sent the email out internally, especially with promotions, so I'm kind of asking you, when there is a promotion?
Sure.
Would you send the same email to each of us as the commissioners?
Yeah, that's something like, I would have to coordinate with staff, but certainly something we can look at in the future.
Do you initiate those emails?
Yes.
Okay, so can you add each of us as the commissioners to those emails?
Is that something, I mean, I would go through Edward, of course, he's, to send out those...
So Commissioner, so what you're saying is you, when those, when those promotions are made, you want to be notified before?
Right.
Then put it out to your staff?
I mean, it's just...
I don't think she's saying before staff, she's saying with staff.
Or with staff. I mean, that's something we can look at, yeah, we can do that.
That allows us.
Now, I'm going to tell, I'm going to say this, it's difficult to do it for the whole city. It's going to be a difficult process. People get promoted in some departments and it doesn't get publicized. But you're talking about in, like, police and fire.
I think the ask is, if you're sending the email, just include us. That's it. If you're sending the email to anybody in staff, just include us. Hey, this person got promoted.
Well, wait, 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 wait. Now, I'm not going to send every email, I send your staff to you, but promotion-wise, if you're talking about promotion-wise, yeah. That's something we can come up with to let you know.
I mean, I sat with Chief Wyman and Chief Howell yesterday, and they never made mention of these, of the promotions, and then two hours later on social media, here it is, these are the promotions. And I'm like, wow, I sat with them, they never even mentioned these promotions. So it would have allowed me to ask them, like, here you had the... So it would have allowed me to ask them, like, here you had division, okay, internal restructuring, Division Chief Sean Knapp, he was just promoted last month. So now he's the training officer.
Yes.
Does he have the skills to be a training officer?
So, you know, some of the, some of the discussion that came up earlier, you know, the why from within, you know, I think those, those key components, for me, you know, one, there's so many reasons and good people within our department who are highly trained. There's numbers of, number of people that are duly qualified in so many different roles. But if you promote within and you give them the proper support, which is what I want to accomplish, that is my main mission, and what I've promised this council and the Duran family and a lot of different people throughout this, that creates that cycle of value within a department. So when I'm told that, you know, I'm looking, and I've seen it too, looking at friends and things like that, that, that's false. I want to make sure that we're creating the best culture possible and retain people. You know, internal mobility helps retention motivation, that's something we're trying to work on right now. Good firefighters are motivated to stay, you know, and that's, the men and women see that opportunity if it's internal. Improving that asset throughout time. Every person, and I'm going to go through the different qualifications if you want to, of each, each of the people I promoted, they, as they grow, they become more valuable to our department, to our department. You know, that's something that we want to try and encourage, we've talked about succession plans, we're talking about who the next directors are going to be. That homegrown feeling, there's more buy-in with that sort of thing. And showing your people you have faith in them to tackle our challenges goes a long ways, and that's what I'm trying to do here. Sean Knapp, Division Chief of Training, he is qualified in every inspector, he is a task force guy, he is, he is certified instructor, he's a certified, he's been teaching at the, the similar state, teaching fire standards for the last five years. He's perfect. Lieutenant Manard, Division Chief of Health and Safety, he's helped with, I'm just trying, you know, look at some of their stuff, he's fully demonstrated support for our crews by preventing mental wellbeing, which is something we're trying to tie into health and safety right at this time. He's led and started our peer support team, he will add the health and safety aspect to the mental health program, and he oversees a lot of that stuff.
Can I just, for one moment, and, and Jerry Maynard, he is, he is absolutely loved by everyone, but he is, he's kind of our community firefighter, he does, he puts together, you know, all these golf groups, and he's, he was very much a part of the 9/11, I mean, so you're giving him this job, where, what time is he going to have to do this job? I mean.
He's not doing, he's, he's out of the other, he's no longer going to be.
He's no longer be, okay.
Correct, yes. This person's going to be solely, and Manard is going to be solely dedicated to the health and safety aspect.
Who is going to come up behind Jerry?
So that is going to be reassigned under the fire inspector, which has to do with fire prevention and all those things as well.
So now, that's Chief John Howell?
Mm-mm.
No?
No, this is in, Lieutenant Holderfield is coming as a captain inspector now.
Oh, okay, well, that wasn't the name that was listed, what was the name again?
Jeremy Holderfield.
Okay, Jeremy Holderfield, okay, he's the fire inspector, and he's going to be?
And he's, he's a public education, education officer, he was actually our secondary fire inspector under the past administration, we're bringing him back in to do that. He's a proven leader, he's a certified in fire and life safety education, he's Fire Inspector One and Two, he's also, a big thing I'm looking at too, is he's, he's helped with our recruiting process before, we talked about in our meeting.
Right.
When we went out and did that grassroots approach, he was a big part of that. So these people I'm putting in place are just on the whim. We have, our men and women are excellent, we have so many, again, duly qualified people, I see no other way but to promote within, and these people are more than qualified, I assure you that.
And then Chief John Howell?
Yeah, he's staying in the same role.
He's still staying as human resources, and what is he, what is his title?
Uh, fire, he's suppression.
Oh, he's suppression?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's all I'm asking, is if, if there's a promotion, and these were important promotions.
Yes, ma'am.
You didn't mention them yesterday, so.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I had a, a digital media reach out to me and asked, do you have a comment on the four promotions? And I was, at first I was like, well, those four promotions were last month, why would they ask me about that? And then when I saw it on social media, then I realized those were the promotions that he was, so, again, it seems like social media seems to be getting what's going on inside City Hall, and then I'm finding out, and I'm sure the other commissioners are finding out through social media. So it just, just as a courtesy, just send us, you know, make us part of the list, so that when someone says, oh, you know, the fire department, they just promoted, we say yes, and then we can kind of answer to that, that at least let our residents know, we're in the know.
It's a good look for us as a city.
Right.
To have our leaders be in the know, and, and similarly, to any firings of any department heads, we don't like surprises, it's embarrassing to us when we, when somebody comes to us and says, oh, this happened, and we, all right, so we have to look into it. So I think to, to echo Commissioner Velasquez, just include us on.
That's it.
Promotions.
That's all I'm asking.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay.
One thing I want to, diversity, equity, inclusion, now that we're, we've knocked out the Hispanic Heritage Celebration, what's on next on our agenda for that?
We got our next meeting, October, kind of, hadn't gotten past that, we did, I know we've got a meeting coming up in October, second week of October, I think.
Okay, and from there, that, that kind of game plan?
Yeah, 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 we, we just, you know, we got started, we had six weeks to put together the festival, and so we were.
Understood.
Hustling, yeah. Next up, Edward, anything?
The only thing I have is Jim Hitt will be sending you a new sheet on our population figures, our housing, our numbers, for a statistical number, so you'll have them for your New Year.
Michael?
Nothing to report, but I guess in, in response to Commissioner Nesta's suggestion on the noise ordinance, if, if you wish, if it, if you're looking at receiving, I guess, a first draft or working on one, just in the past, and former Commissioner, Commissioner -elect Becker can, can attest that, I mean, I can present, we did this when it came to the Dollar Store ordinance. If you're looking for, you know, my office to prepare, I guess, the first drafts, and if you want input, feel free to communicate, I can work, I think on the Dollar, I'll call it Dollar Tree, but no, the Dollar Store ordinance, I worked directly with Commissioner Becker, I think I worked with you as well, Commissioner Velasquez, for what the details were, and, and have an input back and forth, we can do that, so if that's something you want to begin, I can begin that process and work with you before we even present it forward. A noise ordinance doesn't have to go to, to, to planning commission, so I can, it will, but before, we can at least work on the language, and that invitation's open to all commissioners to get input on what you want to see before it gets presented for, for, for first reading, and then we can, at that point, discuss it open for the public, I can begin that, that process, so if you want to reach out to me, or any of you can reach out to me to begin, we can begin that process, and we can start the, the drafting, or I can have a, a first draft that I can then disseminate, disseminate to each one of you individually, not in a group, I will communicate with each one of you individually, to receive any input for what you want to see and what direction the ordinance to take, I will gladly do so. Done it in the past, and I'll do it in the future for any type of subject, especially a subject matter that, I would say is near and dear to your hearts, but that you want to see proposed forward, I mean, as you, you are the legislative body of the city, and as such, some, some of you, you can take ownership and sponsorship, it's like a, it's like a legislator sponsoring a bill, I'm here to assist you in getting that drafted and prepared for, for passage, but I can go ahead and start working on, on that language, and we can, we can, we can work together on getting something prepared.
Perfect, I think it's really valuable, thank you.
Okay, last but not least, Mayor's report, the September 11th, I guess, you know, great, you know, I guess, remembrance of our brotherhood we lost in 9/11, 21 years ago, you know, we start out Friday, we had, I think, most, was everybody here, other than Commissioner Velasquez here Friday for the, the memorial out front, City Hall, and really well done, Police Chief, Fire Chief, did a nice job on that, so thank you, and the Honor Guard was there as well. Then Saturday, started out Saturday morning with 5K, which I think was the biggest crowd, biggest crowd we've ever had, I think, they said like 140, 140 people for the 5K run. Concert, a little disappointed, I don't know why, we, we pushed it out, you know, our IT department pushed it out, and it just didn't get quite the turnout we would like, but, you know, there's, there's always next year. Onto the Hispanic Heritage Celebration, you know, we put the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board together, I, six weeks ago, and, and was, tell you, with a lot of teamwork, you know, we had, each individual member was bringing something to the table, not only bands, but the, the, the radio station and, and, and all the people that were involved, I got out there and knocked on a few doors to get some folks to, to, to be a part of that, I think we had to end up with 26 different vendors there, which sounds like everybody had, all our vendors had a good time, so I'm, I'm sure it will grow from there, and quite honestly, I think we'd have had more restaurants, but there were, that shortage of labor, we just had a hard time, they had a hard time splitting, you know, between Kettleland Nelson Park and their own restaurants, but really, really well done, and so hats off to our diversity board for all the hard work they put into that. Last, just not a, not a big thing, but wanted to, the IT department, as they honing in on their audio visual here in the, in the chambers, these plexiglass walls are creating havoc with the cameras, and unfortunately, Commissioner Smith, when it's bouncing off me, I'm making you not look so good anymore, I hate to say that, but, so if we can, we can leave it and adjust to that, or we can take the plexiglass walls down, obviously we'd keep them in case we have another outbreak, but IT would like to remove them, but either way, we've got to, we've got to adjust the, the sound and, and lighting and cameras based on with them or without them, so just looking for some kind of a, how do y'all feel?
I hate them. I'm always over here looking, because I got to go through two plexiglass.
If it's going to make me look better, I'll have to take them down.
That's all I need to hear. We'll make Commissioner Smith look better. With that.
Before you sign the goal.
Yes, sir.
In reference to the September 11th event, I want to challenge all the commissioners and the mayor for next year, that we're going to all enter into the 5K, and Commissioner Nesta's agreed to train us, so that we will come in.
Let's get it. I had Debbie and, and Edward, and I, we all made the, the 5K, so.
So that's what we want to do next year.
I'm with you, good.
All right.
Awesome. With that, all the public hearing ended.